Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Millbury Planning Commission meeting for October 2nd, 2017. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please? Commissioner Quigg is excused. Commissioner Davis. Vice Chair Walker. Chair Joe.
Present.
Thank you. For the agenda review, we don't have that many items. I was going to see if, considering the scope of 7A versus the scope of 7B, which is significantly smaller, I was going to see if it would be okay with the other commissioners, fellow commissioners, to maybe move that up to address 7B first, just because it's, it might be a shorter project, but I want to leave it up to how... Okay, so I'd like to go ahead and move, move 7B, item 7B up, assuming that it will go relatively quickly. Okay, so public now minutes, the draft minutes for August 7th, 2017, for this, for this, I would like to, I'd like to propose, just in terms of the draft, to be able to continue that to the next time, if okay with my fellow commissioners. I did have a question on the minutes for the project at 311 Helen, 300 Helen Drive, and it, I did oppose the project at that time, and I wanted to make sure that it was more detailed in terms of the reasons for that, and that wasn't in here. So I'd like to ask that we move that, continue that to the next meeting, if that would be okay. Do we need to, we don't need to do a vote or anything on that, right, to, just to continue it, or should I? Yes, we do need a vote. So I would like to, I'd like to motion, make a motion to continue the meeting minutes for August 7th to the next scheduled meeting. Oh, sorry, let me move, I'll do a motion, seconded by Commissioner Davis, and if we can have votes. Okay, and so approved to continue to the next meeting. I don't know if we noted that Commissioner Fung is here, so I'd like to make sure to note that he is present. Now, public communication, so this is reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. So if you are here to speak on any of the other projects, we'll have a time, at that time, for you to speak, but this is for anything that's under the purview of the Planning Commission, but not on our agenda this evening. So do we have any, anyone who, and as you see here, we're trying to limit it because we do have a lot to get through tonight. So do we have anyone who wishes to speak? No? Okay, I'll just read, I'll just note into the record that the Planning Commission did receive a letter from Raymond Wong regarding the Gateway at Millbury Station project, and asking for prompt action on this proposal to be able to move it forward, for the sake, especially due to the benefits to veterans. So I'll just note that, that was received. Old business, there is none. Public hearings, now moving on to item 7B, as we shifted to that, the 621 Magnolia Avenue, City Hall Parking Lot Design Review to allow the construction of an interim one-story modular office building with associated infrastructure located in the P through F public facilities, PF Public Facilities District. So can we have the staff report on that, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. The Public Works Department has submitted a request for the construction of a new interim modular office building. It'll be located in the City Hall Parking Lot. It's approximately 6,000 square feet in size, and its intent is to provide general office space for city services as the community center rebuilding efforts continue. I'd like to pass the color material board. Thank you. And the structure is fairly low-profile. It's ultimate height is about 19 feet. That includes the parapet that will screen five HVAC units on the roof. It, the structure will be made of a composite material, it'll have wood trim, and one, one change that I'd like to mention is that instead of the black vinyl for the windows, the applicant is proposing a bronze anodized aluminum, and staff concurs with the applicant that this is probably a better design choice and will fit with the color scheme that is proposed on the color material board. So that should be, that should be noticed. The general appearance of the, of the building in relationship to the other low-profile buildings, the flat roof, the color scheme, as well as the windows and their location, and the location in between the existing buildings that provide public facilities, seems to fit in the meeting with the general plan policies for the Constitution Square and the uses that are provided in, in this area. Findings and, and, excuse me, the findings are provided along with this, but along with meeting the intent of the general plan and the zoning code for public facilities, it should be noted that this, this part of this review is, is because new buildings do require design review regardless of their interim or permanent, and this is intended to be an interim facility as we, as we look at options in the near future for the, the new community center. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA. As part of the project, it will displace approximately 30 spaces, but the applicant and staff have identified other, other parking spaces in the vicinity that will support the, the use during business hours for City Hall and the other public facility buildings. As part of the, the improvements, it will comply with ADA and accessibility, so there will be a ramp, there'll be some improvements and improved circulation in the parking lot. Staff's available for any questions that you may have. The conditions of approval are attached for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff? None? Okay, do we have the applicant to add anything?
Staff would like to acknowledge that Alan Shear, Administrative Services Director, will be presenting for this project.
Excuse me. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the, members of the Commission. As Director Ward stated, I am Alan Shear, the Administrative Services Director for the City of Millbury, and one thing I would like to convey to the Commission is the timeline, in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of, you know, trying to take a positive approach to the proceedings this evening and hoping for, for approval. Then that would trigger a 10-day appeal period, which would then last through the October 12th, that's a Thursday, next day being a Friday. So if all goes well, the contractor would mobilize on Monday, October 16th, and by mobilization, that includes fencing out the entire parking lot, which would begin the site prep work of, specifically that involves the beginning of trenching of the utilities of electrical and sewer services to the, to the modular office buildings, and those, those utilities will be served by an underground connection to existing services. We do have an application into PG&E to provide electrical services, and we're on, on target to have PG&E install the, the necessary infrastructure in the beginning part of November, and all throughout the mobilization period of, of not only the trenching, but also the actual assembling and fabrication of the, the modular structure itself. It's, the, the, it's going to come in, in essence, eight pieces, and it's going to be assembled onsite, and it'll ultimately be a 6,000-square-foot facility, and, and the, the goal is for it to take approximately six to eight weeks, and we're hoping to open at the end of November, early December.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the applicant? None? Okay, thank you. Do we have any, let's see, we'll open up for a public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? I don't, I haven't gone through the speaker's slip, so anyone, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Flaherty, 421 Ashton. Are there two trailers accompanying this structure that's being built?
If you, if you...
Are there two trailer, portable trailers accompanying this structure?
No.
So we're not having those portable trailers as part of this, then? Originally, we, they were purchasing two trailers for a million dollars apiece with money from the insurance settlement, for the, for the temporary quarters for park and rec. Has that been discontinued?
Originally, the discussion and the research...
I'm sorry, they need you to turn on the mic if it's not on already? Thank you.
The, originally, the, the idea was to have two structures, two modular structures, but through subsequent discussions and site locations and so forth, the, the plan ultimately settled on, on one modular structure, which is what will be in the back parking lot.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. We'll open it up for Commissioner comments or motions as appropriate. Would anybody like to start? Nope. Commissioner Walker?
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the design review allowing the construction of an interim, one-story modular office building with the associated infrastructure located at the Public Facilities District at 621 Magnolia, with the application and the attached conditions.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Davis. Can we have everybody's votes, please? We have passed four to, 4-0 unanimously passed to move forward. Thank you, and again, there is the 10-day right of appeal, right of appeal period. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 7B, so this is a public hearing, I mean 7A, sorry, for site development plan within the Millbury Station area, planned development district, specifically the Millbury Sarah Station project. So may we have the staff, I believe.
Before we begin, I'd just like to introduce some of the team members. Tonight with us, we have Tom Matalena, Deputy Director. We have project planner from Mick Consultants, Colette Meanyay, and then from our City Attorney's Office, we have Michael Conran and Brett Gladstone. So thank you. And, and then we do have Cyrus Kork here as well to answer for Public Works.
Good evening, members of the Commission and members of the community. My name is Colette Meanyay. I'm a contract planner working directly for the city, assisting them in processing this application. We have before you the conditions of approval for only one of the actions. It's a significant project. We believe that it will take a little time for community members and the Commission to grapple with it, and we wanted to start that process. The development agreement, which provides for the increased density that the project requires in exchange for community benefits, is still undergoing discussion, and therefore we started with taking a look at the overall project and the likely conditions of approval, and wanted to start there. Are the recommendation to you tonight is, once you have heard this, is to continue the meeting, continue the public hearing to a later date where we can conclude, work on the tentative map, the findings under the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as the development agreement. You will be making recommendations on all those four actions to the City Council as a, as a package. So just wanted to briefly go over where, how we got here. It's been a long journey for this developer of the site on the west side of the BART Station, as well as the developer on the east side within the BART Parking Lot. Proposals for development basically resulted in the decision to prepare an update to the specific plan, which required the preparation of an EIR. That process is started in 2013 and has continued through to this action of the Council on February 9th to adopt the specific plan. Subsequent to that, the developer revised his application in light of the provisions of the specific plan, and we've been working with him over the last almost year and a half in order to, to bring that forward. The project site... So an overview, questions, and then continue the hearing is... So just as an overview, you can see a circle which is a quarter-mile radius, walking distance, from the project site which sits on the west side of the Millbury BART Station. Actually, the Millbury Intermodal Station, since it also accommodates Caltrain, and is, has been identified as the high-speed rail site for the, for the Bay Area when that project goes forward. This is an overview which shows the site, site is currently, I think, about 22 separate parcels being consolidated into three development parcels. Parcel 1, which fronts on El Camino Real. Parcel 2, which sits to the rear along a proposed extension of California Drive, and Lot 3, which is at the corner of the projected extension of California Drive and Linden Avenue. You can see, shadowed to the top of the screen, the existing BART Station. This provides a footprint of the proposed buildings together with a concept of how both the California Drive would be extended, but also realigned south of Linden. So right now, it comes in much further to the south. Kind of in that general area, this would realign it to the north and connect it up to the existing alignment of, of California Drive. That's the long-term vision for that alignment. This shows the location and the general footprint of the three buildings. Building R1 would have a penthouse above the 10th floor with a terrace and a garden, and it sits in that general location. See if I can do this with more... This is building, residential building R2, which has a, a garden, a pool, a recreational amenity, and some interruptions in the building facade which will also provide for landscape amenity. And building C1, which is a commercial building, nine stories with office. Building R, the R1 building and the C1 building, both have retail on the ground floor. All three buildings are underlaid by a three-story underground garage. The garage parking will be uncoupled from the uses in the building. That means if you rent an apartment, your apartment rent doesn't automatically include one or two parking spaces. You would rent those, or in the case of a condominium, buy them separate from the cost of the unit. Similarly, with the leasing in the, for office buildings or retail buildings, the rent would be, for the rent or, or leasing of the parking spaces would be separate. One of the things that does is it makes people be mindful of how much parking they actually need and use, and any parking that is not necessary to service these developments will be provided on a hourly or daily rate to the general public, helping to meet a need in that part of the community for additional parking. The roadway, so we have on one, most of it is bounded by California Drive. This is a proposed roadway. Sarah is an existing roadway, and right now, there is an existing building that has been a nursing home and is currently not actively used, but, but does still exist on the property. And Isabel Alley, and these are existing businesses and privately-owned properties that have access from Sarah. This is an isometric view, a view of what the buildings would look like, viewed from above and, and to the south. And this is a view of the gateway corner. This would be the corner at California, directly opposite from the existing Victoria intersection and El Camino Real, with signature elements to make it a focal point or a distinct corner, recognizing the importance of that, that gateway. This is the second story of the parking garage, and parking's an important issue. So I'd like to, since it was something that was discussed extensively in the staff report, I'm taking this graphic in order to talk with you about some of the issues. First of all, this site is about 3.6 acres, and nearly three-quarters of an acre of that site is needed for the extension of California Drive. That was recognized in the specific plan, which contemplated incorporating the easterly seven feet of Sarah Avenue into the project site, basically still providing for some development and allowing for the necessary width to extend California Drive along the eastern side of the property. In addition to that, this project proposes extending an additional 17 feet for a total of 24 feet underneath the existing Sarah Avenue. That additional 17 feet would only be at the second and the third levels, and it would permit the addition of this row, oops, this row of tandem parking. This line here, kind of running down the middle of that, is the boundary of the project site plus the seven feet that's been contemplated in the specific plan. You will see also that there are spaces that are provided in tandem, in total throughout all three levels of the parking garage, not counting these ones which staff has recommended be deleted, are 88 tandem spaces. Additionally, the site shows parking that's located in the drive aisle. Now, many garages with valet parking use the drive aisles as a way of providing parking, and they move the cars around and keep track of things, and that certainly is part of how this site might be operated. However, we would not count those spaces as how they meet their parking demand, or how the spaces, you know, we wouldn't count them as, as existing spaces. Similar, if you had a long driveway on your property and you could accommodate several guests parking off the street on that, we wouldn't recognize those guest spaces as, as parking spaces for allowing additional development on your property. So the analysis in the staff report does not count the parking spaces in the drive aisle, although they may very well be part of how parking could be provided to the general public. The elimination of this 17-foot encroachment, which is the recommendation of staff, would remove a total of 94 parking spaces and would remove the issue, part of the project includes asking to increase the parking or provide up to 115% of their parking, their minimum parking requirement. The specific plan only allows for a 5% over. With the elimination of those parking spaces, together with not counting spaces that are located in the drive aisle and can only be used in conjunction with an onsite valet attendant, the site meets, it falls below the 5% over the, the maximum amount of parking that, that, or the minimum amount of parking that would be required in the specific plan. I also just wanted to show, you know, that there, there still would be tandem parking, and the tandem parking would have to be operated either by both units being assigned to the same unit, so that whoever's in that dwelling unit, that apartment unit, those occupants sort out who's in first, who's in second, who needs to leave first thing in the morning, those sorts of things, or they're actively managed by an onsite valet who would park cars and move cars in order to make use of the interior space, which can only be used if the outer, the car in the outer space is moved. The other thing I want to talk to you about with respect to the parking garage is its encroachments underneath additional roads. So here you see, showing here is that additional 17 feet of encroachment, but there's also a proposal along all of this side for up to a 14-foot encroachment, which would accommodate parking, but also provide an area between the exterior wall of the garage and the parking, the first row of parking, to provide an area for long-term bicycle storage. In reviewing the plans, there appear to be other areas that could be more effectively used in the garage where... used in the garage, where some of that parking could, that bicycle parking could be relocated. And the recommendation of staff is that the encroachment be held to a maximum of seven feet. That would affect six or seven parking spaces, and would be a fairly narrow area that would need to be accommodated. There's also, along this edge of the building, along Linden, there's also a two-and-a-half foot projection. And again, given the scale of the project and the underground garage, staff believes that that can be accommodated without impacting the garage operation, that that additional two-and-a-half feet can be folded into the project without affecting the garage layout. So in summary, the subterranean areas include encroachments. The recommendation from staff is to allow up to seven feet into California, not to allow an encroachment into Linden, and to only allow the seven feet in total, which is both above-ground and below-ground, onto the Sarah property, the Sarah right-of-way. These are elevations of building R1. You can see here, facing onto El Camino Real storefront, and this would be a retail space that would front onto El Camino Real. And this is the face that would face towards the adjacent commercial development to the north, as well as facing somewhat towards Hemlock. Hemlock is actually located a little more, coming into the site more about here. And again, this continued the views around all four sides of the building. This is building R2. It's a little harder to image, because the two buildings, you can't sort of get a viewpoint where you can stand back, so some of this is also showing you parts of building R1. So this is, this part here is building R2, and you're still seeing part of R1, because from that vantage point, you wouldn't be able to see parts of building 2 through building 1. This is a cross-section that shows the relationship of parking, as well as a building through two different sections, showing how the buildings are broken up by some of the terraces and by the pool, open space area that's built on the parking podium. This building, this project is adjacent to the Hemlock Avenue area. And one of the policies of the specific plan talks about requiring a 45-degree plane to slope the buildings back as they approach this neighborhood. This side of the street, over here, is zoned commercial, and therefore, the setback does not apply from that area. This property here is zoned and designated for single-family development. And this, we picked, I picked 108 feet, which is a top point of one of the buildings, just to give you a sense of what portions of the buildings would be affected by that line. So this is 108 feet from the front property line. This is 108 feet from the side property line. And then, the, from this point, that corner, that portion of the building is also affected. The recommended conditions of approval would require that the buildings be redesigned and modified, so that, right now, they just come up to their 100-foot height, those portions of the building would have to be modified in order to comply with that policy. This shows one of the other development standards, which distinguishes between the height of the building and the height of the street wall. And it sets one height limit, as the maximum you could have at a street, then the building has to be stepped back, and then it can go to the height of the district, but it's intended to have some impact on the perception of the height of the building. Within 600 feet of the station area, the street hall, street wall height is 100 feet. These buildings only go to 110 feet, so you'd have relatively an insignificant notch, and really, not much change in the perspective of the height. The specific plan recognized there needed to be flexibility in order to make the best use of these areas and to result in good quality design. And the adjustment said that they can up to a 10% change in a standard. So one of our recommendations to you is to use that flexibility, not to require these buildings to be notched back for only the top story, but to grant them an adjustment to the maximum street wall height and allow it to go to the height of the building, which would mean they wouldn't be notched in the way that's shown in this graphic. Keeping in mind that the land, that a significant amount of the land that California Drive would be extended on is currently in the ownership of the applicant. Part of the proposal is that portions of the buildings will overhang the new street right-of-way at no less than 25 feet above grade. And that's shown here on this, you can see little bits of it here, and more substantially here and here. And this would include some amount of floor area on some units and balconies also. And the encroachments, I think, along here are about nine feet, four inches, and along here are about eight feet, eight-and-a-half feet. There also would be some encroachment here at the front of the building. Part of the conditions of approval and part of the developer's proposal is to provide an easement to widen the sidewalk at that corner to 12 feet, but would still allow the balconies of upper units to overhang that area by about four feet. So for the residential units, as outlined in the staff report, there were basically three areas of compliance with the development standards. One was the maximum height of the street wall. The second one was the height of the ground floor. The ground floor is required to be 15 feet high. The, this retail area, I believe, is something on the order of 21 or 22, or maybe even 24 feet tall, so it's a tall, good retail space. But in order to make floor plates match elsewhere, some of the other ground floor spaces are only 13 and a half feet. And again, using that 10% adjustment provision, that would allow the ground floor to be reduced from 15 feet to 13 and a half feet and still be in compliance with the plan. And staff recommends that, both for the R1 building and for the R2 building. So just to summarize on the residential building, some of the special things are reduction in the ground floor from 15 to 13, allowing portions of the living area and balconies to overhang the public right-of-way that's being created as part of this project at an elevation of no less than 25 feet, to allow the maximum street, street wall height to increase to the maximum height of the building, which would mean that the building would not have to be notched in for only another seven feet or 10 feet, a small distance. And lastly, that the corners of the building here, adjacent to the residentially-zoned property, this portion in here would be affected by redesign to maintain the 45-degree plane. So those, that covers the recommendations with respect to the garage and the residential units, the residential buildings. This building is intended to be an office building, and it is nine stories. And part of the ninth floor is already stepped back to create a terrace. And on the ground floor, there is a two-story galleria. This is a space that runs almost directly aligned with Bart. The intent is that this will be a public space, open to the public from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in the evening, that it will be improved with amenities like landscaping and seating, and that it will be recognized and counted as open space, although it's not open to the sky, it's not technically open space. It would provide amenities, and certainly during inclement weather, very sunny days, it would be a welcome relief. There's about 5,000 square feet of retail immediately adjacent, and the intent is to have that be focused on, to the extent the market allows, on services that are of particular use and interest to transit patrons. The balance of the building would be either office or retail, depending on what the market allows. With this building, there are basically three issues, again. First of all, in the staff report, we've laid out a discussion about why this area should be considered as open space. We've looked at the criteria for the open space set out in the specific plan, and how this space would fulfill those objectives, and our recommendation is that be counted and recognized. The second issue, it has to do with setbacks, and the recommendation is that there modest, there's relatively small encroachments over Linden, as an existing public street, in that those should not be allowed, but that the encroachments, both over Sarah and along California, be supported. And again, they would be at the plus 25-foot level. Lastly, there is an issue of the height of the street wall. And this project, this building's at 116 feet, so the street wall's 100, the adjustment was not sufficient to accommodate the height of the building and not provide for that there be no setting in or articulation. We've looked at two solutions, and both of them were included for the developer to use either one. The first one would be to step the ninth floor in, it's already stepped in on the eastern side, to step it in around all sides of the building, so that it, in fact, meets the standard. At the top of the 100-foot, or 99, 99, 98, somewhere in there, the building would step in for that top story, and therefore, would meet the requirements of the specific plan for the maximum wall, street wall height. The alternative is to grant them an adjustment, which would take it to 110 feet. It would still be six feet over, and therefore, they would need to adjust the nine floors by a small amount on each floor in order to bring it into compliance. And with that, we believe that the building can be approved as is presented. We've provided an overview of the vesting tentative map. There are a number of utility and service issues which are described in the staff report. The two of the most challenging ones were storm drainage and sewer. Sewer, in order to avoid a pump station, the line had to be laid out so that it could gravity flow to the city station, and that requires it to be quite deep along Sarah and Linden and California. Stormwater was initially proposed to run through the building, through the garage, but then there was no overland release. Stormwater systems need to be designed so that if we have a really pelting rainstorm, it might momentarily, or, you know, for a short period of time, overwhelm the capacity of a storm line. And without overland release, it then backs up into the upstream areas. So it's important that that be included. In order to do that, the line has been rerouted and laid out in Sarah, again, continuing on Linden, and then along California. And the overland release is in the drain line that was originally proposed within the garage. There are other issues with that, and we will be addressing those in the conditions of approval when we bring forward the draft resolution for the tentative map. The last thing I want to touch on is the development agreement, which is still under One of the challenges for the applicant is, things are still in flux. So he doesn't know the full extent of all the public improvements, all the infrastructure that would be necessary, and he needs to make sure that he has a project that finally pencils out. There's no point getting an approval for something that financially can't be built, and there's no point for the city approving a project that's never going to go forward. So that's one of the reasons some of these things are still under discussion. But the, what he would gain would be a significant increase in development intensity. He would gain the ability to continue to pursue those approvals over a period of 10 years. Normally, the approvals would only have a life of one to three years. And he would gain protection from changes in development regulations for that time period that the development agreement would be for. In exchange, what is under discussion is that we would get affordable housing. The site provides more than the minimum 10% community, publicly accessible, open space, providing right-of-way improvements, the extension of California, both in terms of providing a portion of the site, but also providing the construction. And what's under discussion is if the city is able to successfully assemble the right-of-way necessary to realign California Drive south of Linden, that that could be designed and constructed as part of this project as well. Lastly, there is included in your packet a fiscal impact analysis that shows that this project is fiscally positive as it's evaluated. Again, it's somewhat optimistic, assumes everything gets rented up and is occupied and there's sales tax generated. But it would generate a balance over the cost of providing services, about $441,000 per year, positive to the city. But it would also provide $2.3 million annually to the school district. And there would be, at the front end, as part of this project being approved, nearly $12 million in impact fees that would help to fund necessary infrastructure to serve the project and other development within the specific plan area. With that, I'd like to conclude, see if you have any questions. The applicant and his representatives are here and would also make a brief presentation. I'll be available for questions later, but if there's something I said that confused you, that may have confused other people, so please speak up.
Thank you very much. And thank, I'd like to take this time to really thank all of the staff for just your hard work and many, many hours, I'm sure, on this projects, on these projects. Do we have any questions of the staff? I know we're going to have a lot of discussion afterwards, so just any clarification questions for this, for now, and then we'll have time to kind of delve deeper into the details, because I'd like to move on, give the applicant a chance to speak, and members of the public a chance to speak as well. So any commissioners have anything you really would like to have clarified? Okay, we'll reserve that until later. If we can have the applicant, please come forward and present the project.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing us tonight. It's been a long time coming, and we're finally here. I brought tonight essentially the entire staff that's worked on this project. We have Architects International, Mr. Bill Higgins and Mr. John Shidi. We have HOK, and that's Kathy Doy, and Paul Wolford, who presented last time, but apparently hasn't been able to get here yet. Is he here? Oh, Paul, I'm sorry, I didn't see you come in. And then we have, we have our attorney Jennifer Rank, and also, I have asked the attorney Janet Fogarty to come tonight, she has a little history on the Millbrae Station area specific plan. And I think it's important that the context of this And I think it's important that the context of this project be understood, in the context of what the Millbrae Station area specific plan was intended to achieve. And that history has been rather consistent. We also have a representative from Watree, and that's the parking and garage consultant and engineers, and Mr. Roland Haga from BKF, who is our head engineer on our project, designed the sewer and all of that, and the layout of the parcels. There are a number of issues that we have. Many of them have been resolved, working with staff and trying to, with a variety of consultants weekly, giving them what they need hopefully to close things off. One of the concerns I have is that when we filed our re-application after the change in the Millbrae Station area plan, one of the uses, if you look at Section 5.1, one of the permitted uses is parking. We are proposing the parking that is 115% above what is shown for the uses that we have. But the excess parking that we are providing is intended to be used also for public parking, and that is a permitted use. And I think there's been sort of a miscommunication with staff in not understanding and in the calculations. So we do not view our application at this point as being in excess of what the plan provides. We believe it fits with the plan. Now, there could be concern among certain parties that this would allow for an excessive number of parking to be used by residents or the office building. We have as a requirement to provide an ongoing traffic impact agreement that's based on studies that relate to the uses. In this day and age, cars, every car that comes in that belongs in the facility, that is if it's a resident, or if it's an office user, and they're intending to come into the property, they will have a decal on them that will monitor at the driveway their entrance and exit. Our responsibility is to control the number and to report the number to the city of who's coming and who's going. So that's how it would be enforced insofar as the occupants of the buildings. The excess would be the public parking. And if you don't think there's a problem in public parking around the west side of the Millbrae Station, I call your attention to Millbrae Avenue, and you can drive up at any afternoon, and there are dozens of cars parked there that have decided that they want to be on the west side and have no place to park. The Millbrae Station area plan was originally conceived to provide 3,000 parking spaces on the west side to balance the traffic. Today, we don't have that balance. Everybody has to cross Rollins Avenue to get to park at BART. The site, as you see it, it's three and a half acres. Surrendering the access, the full access on California Drive was a big impact on the size of the site. Then finding out that we needed to give an additional square footage on the California side narrowed the size of the site and impacted the utility and depth of the structures. And we had worked out with Marty, the prior engineer. One of the problems we've had with the project is, by my count, we've had six planners working on this property for the last five years. And for the public to understand what that means, it's like having your boss change every year. And the priorities, the interests, the focus is different each time. We negotiated certain things with the prior property planners, and it was understood that these things were going to fall out as we have presented them. We have not, if you look back, you can see that we designed this project in 2013, and the project we're presenting is pretty much the size and scope and intensity that we presented then. So we've been fairly consistent of what we want to achieve, and we've tried to accommodate the needs that the city tells us it's required, but we don't want to sacrifice the quality or the size of the project. These are how we came into this, and this is where we're headed. And that just is a background thing. I don't want to get into, there are elements here that will all be worked out in the DA. And so it's still, since under negotiation, it's a little difficult to address some of On the easement, I don't have that drawing, but where you saw the double parking along Serra Avenue. We believe that there are solutions, okay, there are solutions to, that would accommodate the street and what needs to be done. The right-of-way easement, the condition that has arisen, that this was not something that was made clear before the staff report, just so you know. There's an issue with regard to the line, the sewer line, that septic line, and how that's, because it's deep, how that's going to be handled. And we believe that it's something that can be handled, but we need to have an opportunity to meet with staff and to give them our input so that we can resolve that issue. The setbacks, most of the setbacks that are in the building above ground are 25, they're all about 25 feet off the ground, so they have no impact on right-of-way. The ones that we have below grade are on the second level, and they're 14 feet below grade. So basically, all utility services we can provide. There's been some question about how we're providing the sewer and septic tank, not septic, storm drain services on Serra Avenue. And we are basically replacing in the same place they are today, the same size pipe and service that's there today, because that system that we're putting in has nothing to do with our project. That system is being put in to service the seven properties on El Camino. And all we're doing is reversing the flow, because right now, they flow into the corner. These properties all flow into this corner. We had proposed putting four pipes.
I'm sorry, we need to stay with the mic. I think there's a handheld, if you need to, thank you. You need to turn it on as well.
The engineers had proposed putting four pipes through our building. We would provide, we would maintain it, we would be responsible for it, but staff engineers didn't like that. They wanted the city to have access to it, and they felt that this didn't do that, even though we would provide all that. The other is we indicated we would pump up to El Camino, and it would go down the existing or the new, to be installed sewer line and storm drain. But they didn't like that because of the pump. So we're taking it around the entire block, okay? But again, it's an eight-inch pipe, and it only serves those properties. It's located in the same place, on the western side of the right-of-way. It's not, we're not, by our accessing the garage, we're not changing the location of these pipes. All we're doing is reversing the flow. I think those are the only issues that I think really are up right now that maybe need clarification. I'd be happy to add any other answers that you have or questions that you have. What I would ask is that, I know you have a process for your hearings and questions and back and forth. It would be helpful if sometimes some of the questions that come up, my concern is that we don't get into red herrings, that we start worrying about things that really aren't issues. And whether it's staff or ourselves, if there are issues that we can clarify, we really would like to be able to do it in context, rather than wait and answer them at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Were you going to have any other members of the team speak, or?
I think, right, they're here, and that's why I'm saying if questions come up, and I can have one of them answer that question, I think it would be more productive than waiting till the end and trying to have everybody remember what was the question that came up.
Sure, thank you. I do have one, if you could just add to that, because you did address the other issues that were mentioned in the staff report. One that you did not mention was about the 45-degree angle height. So if you can address, is the mic coming in? Are you in the mic now?
Maybe it's doubling.
Okay.
That issue is something that we're negotiating and talking about in the DA. And rather than deal with it right now, I would like to have us conclude our negotiations, and you will be able to understand what it is we're proposing. I think we do have a solution for that, that the community and the commission and the council, I think, could approve. But we want to have an opportunity to really vet it out with the attorneys and get it laid out properly. Okay?
Thank you. Do we have any questions right now? And again, we're going to delve into it deeper later, but just any questions from the other commissioners? Or we can, yes?
One for the, I'd like to have Ms. Fogarty give a little background.
I'm sorry, you have to.
I'd like to have Ms. Fogarty give a little bit of background on the Millbrae Station area, the concept and why this is congruent with that concept.
Okay, so Ms. Fogarty?
Thank you. I'm Janet Fogarty, and my office is here in Millbrae, and I've lived here in Millbrae for going on 40 years now, on Hillcrest, which gets a lot of traffic. Vince asked me to talk a little bit about the history of what's gone on here. If I can take you back, if you can indulge me for a moment, to 1976, when I was serving on the very first SAM Trans Board of Directors, we started SAM Trans. And that was the start of bus service for the public at reasonable cost throughout San Mateo County. Go forward to 1980, and I was chairman of the Board of SAM Trans, and it's my signature that is on the contract that created Caltrain service, because Southern Pacific Railroad was going to go out of business. And we negotiated with Southern Pacific Railroad and with the state of California, got state grants, and we created Caltrain. So move forward again a few years, and I was mayor of Millbrae at the time, and we were negotiating with BART over where this BART station was going to go, whether it's going to go in the airport, whether it was going to stop at Center Street, or whether it was going to go to Millbrae Avenue, and just what the impact on the neighborhoods would be. And we negotiated with BART that it would be at Millbrae Avenue, it would be a multimodal station, the largest west of the Mississippi, and that we would provide at BART's expense an underpass at Hillcrest so that the neighborhood of Bayside Manor would not be impacted by the traffic and the parking at the BART station. That was really a lot of foresight on the part of the city council. I obviously didn't do it myself. It took a lot of effort, a lot of work. And what happened was, we've planned, the city has planned over time, for making the most of that development while still trying to protect the people who live and hopefully work in the area, to make it all work out right. And one of the reasons that I decided as a land use attorney that I wanted to work with Vince is because Vince is another longtime Millbrae guy, and his projects are really good. And I knew that he would care a lot about how this works out. He would take literally ownership of it to try to make it the best it could be in that location. And that involves a lot of things. Obviously, you've heard the staff has done just a magnificent job, and Vincent's team has done a magnificent job of putting the puzzle pieces together. Some of the puzzle pieces, though, need to address what happens to those neighborhoods and the parking that they're going to be affected by. So these projects in the area are going to bring several improvements, which Vince discussed, which your staff has discussed, infrastructure improvements to try to make the whole thing work better. But one of the things it needs to do is provide parking, and provide parking not just for the people who are going to live and work in this project, but the people who are going to ride BART, ride Caltrain, and lose their parking spaces because of the other project developments going on around the BART station. So what's happened is the developer here, the designers, have come up with a creative solution. What they've come up with is a way to have parking that uses the land that the applicant owns, but that the city has a right-of-way for utilities and for roadways across. So when you own fee, simple title to your property, according to California Civil Code, you own that property all the way down, all the way up. The developer, the applicant, owns that dirt, okay? The city has a right to have a right-of-way for their roadway over part of it. He's going to be granting them another big chunk of his land for more right-of-way to try to make the traffic flow work, to try to mitigate the problems with the traffic in both pedestrian, bicycle, and automobile, and bus traffic, to make it all work in this design. He's giving up quite a lot, and what he's asking for is to make use of his own land underneath the road. So just keep in mind that when he's saying, "I want to make use of this land to provide parking," it's his land, okay? The city, he's asking for an encroachment on the city's right-of-way, but not to take part of their street, but to take part of the dirt 14 feet under the street, okay? So I'd just like you to keep that in mind, that what's being talked about is giving up essentially 119, not 94, 119 parking spaces, once you consider the parking spaces that would be deleted if the encroachment's not allowed, what would be given up if the parking's not counted for the areas that would otherwise be valet parking spaces through the parking corridors internal to the garage. That's 119 cars going to be driving around somewhere else looking for a parking space. And where are they going to park? Well, they're going to probably park on Millbrae Avenue, and Elder, and Poplar, and Broadway, and El Camino, and they might even go over to Hemlock and walk back. We're trying to stop that from happening, and for years, we've tried to do that balancing act. How do we grow? How do we take advantage of this great opportunity? But how do we protect our residential neighborhoods as well? So I would just like to urge you to consider that question. As Vince pointed out, parking is a use that's allowed. It was allowed in this specific area plan that was adopted in 1998. It's allowed now, and it's allowed as a use outside of whatever's going on on the other buildings. So once upon a time, we dreamed about having a shopping center there and having a shared parking garage that would service both BART and the shopping center. And that was contemplated in 1996. So this is a great opportunity, and you're sitting here at this time in history, and your decision is going to drive literally the future of this town. So congratulations. Boy, you are really in the right place at the right time. And one day, you'll be standing up here probably saying, "And I remember when." Because I do, I remember when, and I am so excited to see good things happening, and it's taken so long to get here. But we've moved so far from that cement plant that was on Millbrae Avenue, and the crossing arms that would come down all the time and stop traffic, to what we have now. So thank you very much for your attention, and again, thank you to the staff for all of your hard work. It's a difficult process, but boy, it's going to be worth it. It's a difficult process, but boy, it's going to be worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, if the commission, I guess we can hold on our questions and go into public hearing, if the public comment portion of the hearing, if that's okay with everyone? Okay, so thank you. I'll just be, as we note, I will just note that the planning commission did receive a letter from the Sierra Club with their, just a letter from the Sierra Club, I'm not going to read it now, so I'm just going to put that into record. And then also a letter that was left, Laura and Ken Smith from 218 Taylor. The gentleman came at the beginning of the meeting, so he just handed it to me. So I just assured him that I would be bringing this up as part of the public comment section and that that can be part of the record. So for them, he just asked to show that they do not support the stationary development for aesthetic reasons for the Millbrae School District and the Caltrain parking concerns. So I'll just keep it at that and have the letter available. So we'll go ahead and go into, if you have, if you do wish to speak this evening and you haven't filled one out, please make sure to do so. We do have quite a few people who are speaking. We'd like to, we are going to have the timer for three minutes. We'd like to ask people to honor as much as possible that time period. And also any comments, I know that these projects, I've been here through some of the big ones already and I know sometimes it can get very emotional and personal for some people. So I'd like to ask everyone to try to keep this very cordial and public comments from the crowd, from the audience, to please keep that to a minimum as well. If you wish to speak, you have full right to do so and you can come forward and speak, but just to maintain order here as much as possible would be very much appreciated. Yes.
Commissioner Joe, I also received a letter, actually an email, from another Millbrae resident who lived at 362 Richmond Drive. Name is, I didn't mention, or what is it, male or female, Jun Wang. And I'd like to present that for the record.
Okay, so we can just read that to say that it's part of the record? Is that, okay. Okay, so we'll start with Marge Colpetro, if you can come forward, please.
Good evening, Commissioner Chairwoman Joe and commissioners. The TOD project has been a long time coming, two decades if not more. All I can say is thank you, Mr. Moosie and city staff, for the progress you've made these most recent couple of years for getting the project to this point. Much more progress must be made, hopefully sooner rather than later. Page five of tonight's staff report indicates the intent of the specific plan update was to provide a policy and regulatory foundation to encourage a vibrant, mixed-use, transit-oriented development district that takes advantage of the regionally significant multimodal transit facility. City Council refined the vision standards to ensure quality new developments that contribute to the community experience. I've read all but the last 52 pages of the agenda packet. I would like to lend my voice to concur from what I read. The project certainly complies with the vision that was set forth, including the recommendations and special conditions that staff has recommended and that you commissioners will finally propose to the city council for approval. Regarding the importance of the fiscal analysis, Mr. Moosie indicated that the city would benefit by $12 million when the development impact fees are paid and then going forward each year, an additional estimated $450,000. In a time when the city council is discussing the rebuild of the new community center and possible bonds and additional fees for infrastructure and taxes, these types of projects are very, very impactful and very, very important to help the community of Millbrae not have to pay so much for bonds and extra taxes. Our community, those you serve, are depending on each of you to do the right thing and help bring a fulfilling community benefits project to our city, including our share of Millbrae's housing. Please be fair and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Constancio Rodriguez. Sorry. After that will be Roger Abuyaki, if you want to get ready.
My name is Constancio Rodriguez and I'm a resident of Hemlock Avenue, which is over I was just reviewing the big paperwork over there and in G 1.01 was a drawing of the proposed building facing Hemlock. And I've shared this before and I'm just resharing it again. Basically, the building on that side, R1, will either be a condo for sale or is it for rental? It could be either. Well, anyway, as a resident of Hemlock, my only concern is the building facing Hemlock has a lot of balconies on that. And in that drawing, or the perspective picture actually, showed that, how it shows when you're looking from Hemlock to those buildings. And my only concern with balconies as opposed to taking advantage of the space and creating a bigger living, indoor living space rather than having a smaller auxiliary outside space is how the residents will be using that balcony and how the building, the building management or so-called police would actually make sure that the balconies will be used. My only concern is in some of the developments I've seen is over time, the balcony becomes an extension of storage and I see like bicycles, barbecue grills, boxes and stuff like that start kind of like piling up on that, on the balconies. And so I'm not saying that it will happen in this case, but if, it's just something that might be looked into. And if space is really very important, indoor living space, that increase of indoor living space might be a more productive use of the space compared to having an auxiliary balcony on that side with windows if it needs ventilation and stuff like that. So that was number one. And then a number two is.
You're starting to run out of time.
Okay. And then the last one is just a question regarding the parking. I noticed that there were tandem parking spaces that will be created and I was just wondering if the parking spaces will be, will the garage be a manned or an automatic self-serve? Because if it's, if that section where you have tandem parking, so I just don't know how the process would work if it's a public parking and somebody parks on one slot and then there's like an empty slot in there. So I was just wondering how that would be addressed.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it.
We'll bring up your question.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what my mic is doing. If we, if we can continue on, if anybody does have a question again, please fill out a speaker slip and we'll go in turn. Roger Abuyaki. Roger?
He said he's going to pass.
He's going to, okay, sorry, pass. Thank you. Joe Chen. And after that, I have Michael Abuyaki. Pass as well, thank you. And then I had Janet Fogarty, but you already spoke. And David Baker would be next after Mr. Chen.
Good evening, pending commissioner. My name is Joe Chen, living at 260 Loyola Drive, Millbrae, for more than 18 years. I've been speaking on behalf of many of my friends who live in Millbrae and we are going to express our concern on the project. Our friends, please raise your hand. Many of our fans also are at home watching the TV for tonight's meeting. The proposed project consists of two 10-story buildings with total 444 apartments and one additional office building with approximately 300,000 square feet of office and retail space. This is a huge increase for a small city like Millbrae. It will make the current traffic, parking problem even worse and it will add significant demand to our schools and utility system. Our city's limited public service resources will be, will not be able to handle the increase. The negative impact on the quality of living for Millbrae residents will be enormous. We are not against real estate development in Millbrae, but we have concerns that this project and the gateway at Millbrae Station project, which proposed another 400 apartments with additional retail spaces, will cause tremendous problems in traffic, parking, schools, safety and public service resources. We strongly oppose developments that will only focus on building as many apartments as possible to maximize their profit and ignore the negative impact to our quality of living in Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you. David Baker. Pass, thank you. Okay, Kenneth Katsoff.
Passing.
Oh, thank you. Robert Ducote. Not passing. And I do appreciate with the last speaker that they did kind of, he spoke as a representative for everyone. I think that, I wanted to note that just in general, that that's helpful to us to be able to move things along and have the discussion. Please begin.
Well, good evening, commissioners and everyone else here in the room. So I'm Rob Ducote, I live on Hemlock Avenue. And to be clear, when we're discussing this development, that's me. So the 45-degree plane issue that's reported in the staff report is my property that's affected. So not only am I here as an interested resident of the city in terms of development, but I also have a personal reason for being here because if we do not enforce certain things in our code and our ordinances as a city, I am directly impacted by that. So let me go to a couple of things and I want to be very clear because I don't want to be misinterpreted, misconstrued ever on this topic. Okay? I am a fan of development. I think Millbrae needs development, but I think that is a responsibility of government, starting with this commission here, all the way up to city council, that we hold the line on our codes and our ordinances. And we don't bend and flex with every whim and desire. We make sure we're consistent, we're fair. Doesn't mean we don't make adjustments and I see plenty of adjustments in the plan. And I appreciated the detailed staff report from earlier and I've read the staff plan. So I liked what it saw for the most part. But I have concerns when we want to move forward approving something and we hope that the amendments get adjusted in the end. It's not about this project, it's in the past, we've seen projects that have moved forward with promises for amendments to be done and they didn't happen until a lot of pressure was applied. So I would encourage us to make sure we look at this carefully. As we look at the city now, we look at this project now, I'm a little concerned about a couple of things. First, if you look at the 10 stories that this project's bringing, there isn't anything this size on a TOD up and down the peninsula. This is a big project. This is the biggest thing to come into Millbrae. And I think I've heard in previous sessions that we talk about respecting the community values and what the community stands for when we talk about developers bringing stuff into the city. I'm not insinuating that it doesn't respect it. It's a huge imposition to what we are today and I'm not sure it reflects what the neighborhoods look like or what we are today. What it looks like, and you look at the picture, it's a beautiful picture, it looks like the BART station's values. It looks like what the BART was designed to do. The project reflects more the BART's built out than the city itself. So when we look at the architectural design and we look at the height of this project, it really aligns more with how BART built that area up and not what the surrounding neighborhood looks like on that side of, on that side of El Camino. So I'd ask that we make sure that we ensure the architecture reflects not only what is there now from a residential basis, but also really supportive of what the city wants itself to look like. Because this will be the defining mark for this city for the next 25 to 50 years, once it's up. It's going to be what people go, "Oh, Millbrae's, that's that city that's got those two huge towers as you go past Millbrae Avenue?" Yeah, that's it. If you can't see Millbrae Avenue, that's where Millbrae is. This is that important of a project, so we need to get the architecture right. On the Florida, on this, as we speak about the density and the size, the floor area ratio in the staff report concerned me, 2.5 to 5.88, from 80 units to 243 per acre. That's a huge, huge benefit. And I'm not, I was looking for massive community benefits in the plan, but I will tell you, I didn't see massive benefits. I saw a couple of benefits that were questionable. One, affordable housing has now been changed. It's not guaranteed.
I'm sorry, your time is, yes.
Oh, my God, well, I am so sorry.
You can wrap up your thought, though.
Okay. I saw in the plans that it was linked to, originally, we were going to get affordable housing. Now it's, we'll get it if we can sell the units and permission to sell units. That takes for me back the community benefit of this project. So please do look at these carefully as you move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Christina Ducote. And then after that's David Crabbe.
Good evening, commission, residents and community partners. I'm Christina Ducote at 500 Hemlock and Rob's not representing me, so I'm speaking for myself. So our concern here is our home. It's the quality of life. I have some pictures here that I'll send around to staff. I think it's really important that we grow Millbrae as a city and a community. We do want that vision and I think Moosie's development certainly has that flavor of the vision, but we don't want to do that at the sacrifice of our residents. And I feel like this is an important and pivotal point in setting precedence there because this isn't going to be the first time you guys come across the impact to a home, a single-family home. We, you know, are concerned that we're just going to get squeezed out of our house. Safety is a real issue because of this road. This is our fence line. What about our kids that play in the background? Where's the buffer? We've never been adjacent to a road, so we're just worried. What if a car drives down that road and crashes through our fence? You know, there's a lot of what ifs that are going through our mind and we just want to say to the commission to really take that safety into consideration, take light pollution that might be coming into our home into consideration, privacy. We're going to have so many residents just looking down on our deck, which, you know, as a resident here in Millbrae, we love our sunshine, we love to entertain outside. And if, and when you see these photos, again, you'll see that this is going to be a blackout for us. We, I'm going to be standing at my kitchen window and there's no sky, there's no trees and it's significant for us. So thank you very much. Thank you to the development team that I know is working really hard to make this vision happen. I think this year is probably going to be the year where something does, but please not at the sacrifice of our home. Thank you.
Thank you. And David Crabbe. And the last sheet I have is Bill Clark. So if you do wish to speak, please make sure to bring your speaker slip up.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm David Crabbe. I'm representing the Sierra Club tonight. You received the letter we sent you, which is actually a reprise of a letter we sent you back in May. And the main, we pretty much like this project in terms of density. We need housing in the area and it's making a big fulfillment for that housing and it fits with your MS, your station area plan. But we did have some issues. There were a lot of items that were talked. There were a lot of items that were talked about but have never been codified in writing. And that's what we were concerned about in terms of the development agreement, that some of the things that are promised are not quite clear if they're actually in, will be in the development agreement. For example, the bike repair shop in the garage, the question about unbundled parking, it wasn't clear if the unbundled parking was just for the residents or whether it was for residents and the office buildings, or the office buildings were a separate kind of a deal. We had a concern about the parking, opposite of what we've been hearing tonight. We feel that the parking should be reduced. There's been a lot of studies done that parking is kind of like, the more you build, the more people come type of thing. It's like when you add lanes to a freeway and three, you know, five years later, the freeway is as packed as it was before. Sometimes it works better to go the other direction. And the transportation demand management portion of the project is talking about a twenty percent reduction of parking. So if your, your parking is one hundred percent or one hundred and fifteen percent, you know, you're reducing it twenty percent, you ought to be able to get down to maybe even eighty percent of what your, your minimum is. The other thing on the transportation demand management we were concerned about is that the, let's see, yeah, we were concerned about transit passes if the developer was willing to grant transit passes for the development. That, they've said that they would, but again, I don't see it, haven't seen it in writing anywhere. I believe they're operating in good faith, but I, we still need to codify it because who knows what's going to happen five years out when this development gets in the, in the process. Let's see. Oh, and also on the TDM plan for monitoring, it talks about annual monitoring, but it has nothing in there about enforcement mechanism if it doesn't meet the requirements. And we feel we should have an enforcement mechanism in there. We always say that there should be something in there for that. And also in terms of the parking, we strongly recommend on any project that's this size in any, near any residential neighborhood, that residential permit parking be considered as a fallback in the situation if there should be overflow parking from this development as it, as it occurs. And that would be, allow the residents to park there, but it has to be enforced, and I understand there's been some issue with enforcement in Millbrae, but it would have to be enforced. But we strongly recommend that.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, we did receive the letter, and it is noted. Is, oh, Bill Clark?
Bill Clark, I live on Anita Drive, resident all my life, sixty-four years in this town. Seems like parking is like the biggest thing here, right? With parking comes people, with people comes impact. Janine Fogarty brought up a thing of, time was when? Time was when Richmond Drive was supposed to be a park. Look at it now. Time was when we had two bowling alleys as a kid to go to pick from. Time was when I had a movie theater. Time was when every time the commission or Millbrae planned something, it impacts the people of Millbrae in a negative way. Not all the time, but a lot of way. We're getting packed here, like cordwood sometimes around this place, and you want to put more people in. It gets, when you define open space as a cement wall with a ceiling, that's insanity. That's not open space. Open space is green. Open space is trees. Open space is open space. So you need to rethink every time, every time you have a piece of land around this place, it's been the same thing. You always want to impact it with building up. Where two buildings were, now there's multi-story buildings, and you just keep packing it in. At some point, it needs to stop. I understand growth. You all talk about growth. But quality of life has to exceed what you're doing here. You talk, people have this fence lines, people are going to be looking down. I got apartments looking over my fence. It's not fun. So at some point, time was when? When the crossing guards were coming down? It took me less time to get to 101 than it does now.
Thank you. Fran Shu, please. Fran? And I just have, I think, one more coming in, so.
Hi, my name is Fran Shu. I'm a resident on 151 El Camino Rail, so will be direct, you know, upset from this new development. I'm living in this condominium. Currently, we have about one hundred residents already. So my major concern is this, we are only four-story high. So this is, would be, you know, three new building would be ten straight high across from El Camino Rail. I mean, I'm, currently, we're facing El Camino Rail, so, you know, that will be a direct invasion impact, but more like a density. So one of the building will have three hundred twenty-five units. So we have the three, you know, and another one has one hundred nineteen. So I'm just worried about, you know, the whole environment that, you know, around the area. I know, you know, there's lots of family, young family within my current building. I don't know, you know, if this new development will be impact on, you know, on school, definitely will be impact on school, but on overall environment. You know, when I heard of this project, I'm beginning to think, oh, when this going to happen, maybe I have to sell my unit, move somewhere else. So this is the hugest concern to someone living close to, to the area.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your name. Signe? Signe, sorry. Please come forward. Signe Brill, and this is the last I have on my list.
I'm Signe Brill. I live at 533 Hemlock Avenue, and I must apologize if this was brought up before this evening. I was unable to attend. I live directly behind a very nice Fairfield by Marriott Hotel. We're glad to have that as our neighbor. During that construction, that hotel originally opened in 2002, there was a ruling by the airport authority to restrict the height to eighty-four feet because of the flight pattern, and I don't know if that's been addressed tonight, but a ten-story building and so on would be a lot taller than that. So I must apologize, and thank you for your time. Just wondering if that's been answered.
Thank you. And we can address that, definitely. So anyone else, just to make sure? Okay? Thank you very much. So we will go ahead and close the public comment session of this portion and then allow the applicant, if you'd like, to address any of the concerns or issues. You don't have to go through every single one, but just if, if there's anything that you'd like to.
With regard to the last speaker, the Airport Land Use Commission has, it's a hundred and twenty feet now, it's not eighty feet. I don't know when that was last done, but they did it, I think they revised in 2010. Nobody attended, and they decided what it was. The, with regard to the height of the building off of Hemlock, you know, if the building's six stories, the issues of the immediate neighbors aren't really going to change. It's going to be a big building. There's the, the, the height, if you go to San Mateo and you look at the building on Fourth Avenue and El Camino, it is a very large building. It's been there for years, and I think many of us don't really even notice it anymore. But behind it, around it, there are homes, and people live there, and they, the height is something that you become accustomed to. People don't sit at their windows and look down on the neighbors. I think that's, you know, that, I mean, everybody's entitled to their opinion, but I don't think that's really how people observe views. The, the concerns that the Sierra Club had with regard to the development agreement, most all those issues are being covered in the development agreement. If they're not, we need to address them. Some of the, the, the transportation, the management plan, it will have, I mean, it's my understanding, I haven't seen the document, but it will have sanctions if we don't meet the criteria. And the, the idea of providing, I think one of the sanctions, if I remember it correctly, was to be that we would then have to give tickets to people to use BART as part of the, the cost of that, not, not that we would be doing it automatically or for a five-year period, I think, as was suggested in the, in the, in the report that I saw from the Sierra Club. I don't, are there any other issues?
There was a question regarding balcony management on that side?
If there's a condominium, it will be part of the, I mean, as an owner or as an operator of a condominium, you, you don't want those things to happen. It's a question of management. It's, in most associations, those things aren't allowed, and they're enforced with dollar penalties. So, I mean.
And if it's an apartment, then?
The same thing can be true. I mean, we can put that as part of the requirement of the, the agreement to develop. I don't, I, that's not the, that's not the desire of this developer.
Right. So just to clarify, then, there would be some, some kind of provision to make sure that they don't use balconies as storage or hanging your laundry or?
And I think we could have it in the, the attorneys would have to decide, but I think we would put it in the development agreement so that it's clear and it'd be enforceable through that agreement.
Another question was regarding the parking, the tandem spaces, whether they'd be manned or auto-served?
I think that the, the way this will evolve is certainly, if, if the parking is underutilized because people aren't able to properly manage parking, the, the, the party that will be administering the parking garage will have every financial interest to be sure that the spaces are properly used because they would lose money.
So there would be a management?
So they would, yes. The idea would be, there, what we've contemplated is there would be a, an ownership of the parking, and they would manage that according to the agreements that we have with the city, and they would charge for parking, and they, they would have a business going on. So they would have every reason to want to be sure that the spaces are properly utilized. If spaces aren't properly utilized and tandem spaces aren't being properly dealt with, they would have, the cost of having some attendance is nothing compared to what they could derive an income under those circumstances.
Okay. And I'm just trying to make sure, I think unbundled parking, just to clarify whether that was just for residential spaces or for offices?
No. It's completely, yeah, it's, it's, the, the idea is that it's cross-the-board. All three segments will, they interconnect, they have basically two driveways, so they have, you know, their access is, is controlled, and they, they will be, you know, they, they will have, on their car, there will be something that designates them as a resident, and they would be charged through their coming in, necessarily somebody to collect at all hours of the day, because if they come in at night, because they're living there and they're going to go to sleep, I mean, they're not, there may not be an attendant at eleven at night, but that would, that's not a problem.
So, I mean, just to clarify, so all residents, whether residential or commercial or office, would, I mean, retailer office, would all be affected by the same?
Yes, they would be given some sort of sticker or, you know, a reflector that, that gets picked up digitally. And we would know, we would be monitoring, the beauty of these systems is that you're not monitoring it once a year, you're monitoring it virtually every day.
Okay. I think that's all I can find, if, just in terms of addressing the, the public comments. Thank you. So we will go ahead and open it up. Am I, I'm getting flagged? No? Okay. So getting motions from people, so I didn't know what that means. So we're going to go ahead and open it up for commission comments and discussion at this time. Again, just to note that we are not approving anything, taking action at this point. We're just deciding how we want to move forward in this. The recommendation of the, the planning of the staff was to continue this so that we can get more information, but to also get recommendations to, that will forward to the city council. So just to make that clear. And secondly, I did, just to note, I was at the city council meeting last week, and I was asked by one of the council members to, if we do have commissioners who've been, who have a relationship or in contact with any of the developers in any of these major projects, if we could make sure to be transparent about that. So I just wanted to bring that up as a reminder. So with that, we'll, we'll go ahead and, I'm thinking that it might be good to break this up into discussion for the site development plan, and then we can have discussion on that, and then the different sections. Does that sound okay with everyone? And just so that we have some order, because there's a lot to go through. So, all right. Who'd like to begin? Yes. Who'd like to, yes, if we can go in order? That would be great. But also, I'm thinking just to break it down, because there are four, five sections to this, the site development plan, the adjustments to the development standards, tentative, vesting tentative parcel map, development agreement, and the adoption of the California, of SEQA findings. So, I mean, obviously, the biggest one is going to be the first one, but we'll launch into that just so that we can go topic by topic. We'll see how that goes. So who'd like to begin?
So.
Mr. Davis.
So I guess the two biggest questions are whether or not the tandem parking is allowed that encroaches underground, and then the other is the forty-five-degree angle. And what I heard tonight is they're both still in flux, that I have no way to evaluate whether they're really good or bad because I don't have enough details. The city presented, for the tandem parking part underground, the city presented one side, and I heard the developer's side, but I don't know how they're going to meet in the middle or how it's going to get worked out. When Janine Fogarty spoke, she said that the easement is a roadway easement, it didn't mention utilities, but the report mentions utilities and where they're going to run and how deep they're going to be, and I don't know if we can even settle this part tonight, but can we have some more information?
The portion that's fourteen feet, for example, on Sarah Avenue, that's really the largest impact. It's, it's fourteen feet below, the garage starts fourteen feet below street grade. Any telephone communications wires, you know, they don't need to be fourteen feet down, they need to be two, three feet down typically. As I said, insofar as the sewer line, it's in the same exact place, at the same exact location as it is now on the east, west side of the street. So those, the, the storm drain and sewer line that we were going to replace, just to replace the flow, in other words, instead of flowing this way, it's going to flow this way, but it's going to be in the same location on the opposite side, on the same side of the street where it is now, is not impacted. So the utilities that are there, the services that are in the street, essentially, all can be accommodated, and the fourteen feet, which is again, within my setback, within my right-of-way, what the city's right-of-way that we own the fee for, that is, that's, that's a depth that shouldn't affect any of the uses that the city's making, and the construction that's over at above twenty-five feet, again, doesn't affect any of the utilities or other things that are, that are currently there.
And what about the forty-five-degree angle from Hemlock?
The forty-five-degree angle is very complicated, okay? We have talked to, to the city, and we were, we would propose that we have a park fee that we're paying. And I, the, the idea that I've had is if, if the property is, is zoned as a, as anything but R1, then the, the station area plan applies, and the, and the, the effect on that residence is, is over with. There's a concern by the, in talking to the Ducots, I mean, they're concerned about construction, and it doesn't matter, again, whether I build a five-story building or a ten-story building. If I build a garage, if I build the, the platform, if I build the building at, where we're entitled to build it on the property line, the, the impacts that are most concerned to them will continue. And it's, it's just, you know, that's just part of the cost of development. It's part of the, and I don't want to use this with them, but it's what we have come to know as not in my backyard. And if we're going to be providing housing in a transit location that the Sierra Club has, you know, desired and that the community has indicated through the, through the Millbrae Station Area Plan it wants, I, you know, I don't know how to solve that problem because something's going to be there, and it's going to be big. It may not be, you know, you may, you may decide it shouldn't be ten stories. I think that would be a mistake, but something significant is going to be there, and it's going to impact. there, and it's going to impact. You know, I don't know how not to do that.
Can we have the staff speak to the first, because we, if we can kind of dial back to that about the encroachment, just to address, because I think that was what Commissioner Davis was concerned about.
I'd ask if the commissioners could look at your tentative map, page VTM 13.
Can we bring that up on the screen as well?
No.
We can't. Okay.
They don't have that as part of the presentation.
Okay.
But this basically is available online. There is a whole webpage set up, and these plans are posted online. But when you look at this Sarah Avenue, it shows the right-of-way, it also shows the dotted edge of the proposed encroachment, and then you have the utilities which are all on the side of the road adjacent to the existing, the seven property, properties over here. But I'd like to point out that when you look at some of the infrastructure, particularly if you come down to Linden, you're looking at a sanitary sewer rim and invert. The rim is at elevation 26.9, and the invert is at 9.7. When you subtract that, that's 20 feet below grade. So, it might not be, you know, because it's on the other side of the street, but it means that he's exercising a right on his side that we couldn't then offer to the people on the other side, because we have utilities that are deep enough on that other side that those property owners who could make the same argument, gee, I own underneath the street, and, you know, I don't interfere with your road or utility, so I want to build out to the middle of the right-of-way too. Well, I'm sorry, you can't because all the utilities have been put on your side, and guess what? They go deep enough that you can't exercise the same right. There's also the issue of when this line gets repaired. Right now, we have a 50-foot right-of-way. When we excavate, it would be a combination of having to shore the lines as well as being able to lay it back so that the walls don't collapse and on the workers, and you have room. If this is narrowed down, the wall along the side of the underground garage would support one side, but the other side would also require shoring, and given that depth, you could imagine the cost of shoring to go down to make those repairs. And so, one of the issues here is if we do it here, it's not just these two property owners, but other people in the community are looking. This is done in other cities. It can be worked out, but there are implications in terms of utility maintenance and liability. And again, I do understand the fact that we need parking in town, and I do understand the point that Mr. Muzy is making, which is that parking in and of itself, public parking is a separate use, and the unbundling of parking would allow that. But to just, you know, to provide additional parking in this area going out into the public right-of-way. Now, he's correct, we have an easement, but he cannot make use of the land that's in conflict with a set of rights he's already given over to the city, or that have already been given over to the city by other entities. So, I don't think we're going to solve that here tonight. I think there's very significant issues here. You know, he's raising the issue, when these areas develop, maybe we won't even need these utilities in the road. That's not my understanding from talking to our Public Works representative who's here tonight. The second issue has to do with the 45-degree plane, and I share Mr. Muzy's frustration with there being so many cooks in the kitchen up until now with a series of planners, but I think it's quite clear, reading the plan, the 45-degree plane applies. It's not in the table of development standards to which the adjustments apply, and even if it was, you could only adjust it by 10%, and it would not reduce the application of that plane. What he has talked about is, well, what if I buy that one property, or somebody buys it and rezones it, so it's park or anything else besides single-family? Well, that would move the point from which we measured the plane over with the width of that lot, say, 100 feet. And if it got moved, then it would not affect his building. But there are homes there that is currently zoned, and until it is changed to something else, that's where the plane is measured from. And other than the change that could happen through a general plan amendment, it would require an amendment to the specific plan to have that not apply.
Okay. Thank you. We actually took on two big subjects at the same time, so I'd like to go back to the first one, because I--
I would like to have my engineers talk to this, because--
Okay.
Some of this is, one of the issues here is what we're doing, again, is to maintain the seven properties on El Camino with essentially their sewer lines and everything in the same direction off of their property, and instead of taking it south towards our property to take it north and around the block. My understanding from engineer, which I'll have Mr.--
And Cyrus Kierpor, who has worked on this for Public Works, is also available to respond.
Engineer should talk.
Okay.
But I think there are solutions here, also with regard to the depth, the depth at 22 feet is going to be what it's going to be. I mean, if it's that, if it's that deep, it doesn't matter that you run it. I mean, yes, you do have, you can do the backfill and that, but you still have to go down 22 feet. Changing that isn't going to lessen the depth, because that's what it takes to get around the property.
Okay. Did we, were we going to have our Public Works, somebody come forward, or did--
Good evening, Madam Chair. Indeed, I think the issue at hand is really the pull-and-push between the parking demand and the utilities on the street. Public Works Department is concerned with the, essentially, having about 22, 23 feet of area where you have very deep utilities, essentially, the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer that would be approximately 20 feet, and the long-term liability and difficulty in maintaining such facilities. And that's why we are not necessarily supporting the idea of pushing the parking structure, which is going to be about 17 feet from grade into the right-of-way on the street. Having said that, indeed, can the facilities be constructed as they're shown on the drawings? They can. I mean, but the concern for us is the long-term maintenance of those facilities, as well as, as Collette mentioned, the precedent that it sets, that if you allow one side of the street to come out, what happens to the other side of the street? And lastly, this idea was contemplated in the specific plan, and the specific plan essentially set the boundaries for which the parking structure can be pushed into the right-of-way. And given those reasons, that's why, I guess, the staff has arrived at the conclusion that we need to stay with the recommendations of the specific plan. And with that, you know, I think Roland may want to also talk about this issue.
Well, so, if I can just ask, so, Mr. Muzy mentioned that it would be a depth of 20 feet no matter what? Is that what you're, so if we don't do the encroachment, then it would be less than that?
No.
It would be that no matter what?
The depth does not change.
Okay.
If you will, it's the area for which you have to work in order to get--
Maintain then to get to it.
--20 feet deep utility.
Okay.
Right now, you have the entire width of the street less than the seven feet that was contemplated in the specific plan. Now, there's additional 17 feet that is taken away from the area where you can dig in order to get to those utilities or maintain them.
Okay.
That is really the issue at hand from the perspective of long-term maintenance, and as was brought up also, the issue of precedent in the long run.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Roland Haga. I'm a vice president with BKF Engineers. We're the civil engineers and surveyors for this project. And there are several options here. Just so everybody understands this, Sarah Street is a low point in this area. It's very low. It handles the storm drainage and the sanitary, and those currently go through the site.
Can you use the mic, handheld mic, if you're going to talk?
I can't see it, but if you look at the alleyway, alleyway-- Hello? Okay. This site, if you look at this alleyway that exists that connects El Camino and Sarah, this is a low point in the area that exists. The current sewer and storm drain go through the property. They have to be relocated. One of the big things we're doing is relocating the 24-inch sewer into California Drive, as well as storm drain relocations and other utilities. We have proposed two solutions here in our plan. One is to put a pump station here to be able to apply all these seven properties and pump it up to El Camino and serve it that way. The city has requested that we run a gravity system, which we can do, but it becomes deep here to get around the project. So, those are the two options. What else can I add?
And both would require the, both would require the encroachment?
No.
Okay.
When we look at, when we look at the encroachment, Sarah Avenue, all the utilities are on the west side of Sarah, except for telecommunications, electrical service, and poles. Water is on the west side, the sewer's on the west side. The only thing that's not on the west side is the storm drainage. So, we have a system we had proposed through the system as an overflow. The city requires us to take it around and go around the site. So, those are two major obstacles we're dealing with from an engineering standpoint. So, when we say all the utilities, the utilities are already on the west side, except for the joint utilities or the electrical services.
Do the commissioners have questions on, as we're, well, so, if I may ask, then of the city, in terms of the pump versus the two options that were mentioned, oh--
One of the things I'd like to say, too, is we've shown that we can accommodate relocation of both the storm--
Can you speak in the mic? Make sure--
We've shown in our plans, and to meet the city's requirements of relocating the sewer around and the storm drainage around the property can be done. However, we're running against reverse grade, so we get very, very deep. But our proposal is to put it in new piping systems with no joints or fusion welded. These systems can last for 50 to 100 years, depending on it. In no way are they digging up these utilities in the future. There's called trenches technologies that repair these kind of utilities, and you don't really need to dig them up if you don't have to. They have a longevity, and we can accommodate that in our design. Another thing to remember is if this TOD was built out in the whole phase, we wouldn't be dealing with these issues, because they'd all be private utilities. The reason why we have to deal with is we have to deal with the existing seven homes along Sarah and accommodate that.
Thank you. Again, I just wanted to just ask about the pump, the, I guess, they were mentioning the two options, so, oh, I'm sorry, if you can speak to that.
Indeed. Essentially, when you are running against the grade, which seems to be at this case, as Roland indicated, the low point of the street would be right adjacent to where you have the L shape of the building. In, I guess, from the Public Works Department perspective, gravity never fails, pump stations do, and given the history of the city with some of the sewer overflow issues, the city does not support having another pump station to be maintained and on by the public. Therefore, we went with the gravity solution with the understanding that it's going to be a very deep gravity line, which will require deep excavations over 20 feet, and that was the logic for us, electing the gravity solution over the pump station solution. And I guess, this diagram indicates actually the challenge that Public Works Department has. If you will, the gray area is the area available for the city to do any possible maintenance, and I understand what Roland is saying, that there's going to be HDB pipe, there's, it's going to have fusion welded joints and so on, but in the, in Public Works Department, anything that can go wrong will go wrong, and you'll end up going that deep. So, from that perspective, the Public Works Department is really looking at this thing, that what maintenance challenges does this provide to us in the long run, and that's why the amount of area or the gray area available to do any maintenance needs to be maximized in order to provide the Public Works Department with the ability to maintain those facilities. And that's where really the challenge is between parking versus utilities.
The other thing is that it is the choice of what this developer, now, again, it is not cheap to put parking underground. That's the most expensive parking you can provide, and it provides an amenity to the community. We provide that parking without having to look at it. But because it's been done as a monolithic underground garage, the only way to put the utilities is either, is to run them through the garage, which is not acceptable for certain other reasons. But the project could have been developed in a different way. It could have been developed with two different garages or three different garages and left an alignment that maintained the current area of flow through the project. So, it's not that the city is being, you know, oh, we're making it as difficult as possible. There, it's inherent in the project that, where the water in the sewer now flows is no longer available, and the choices, you know, again, gravity never fails, the other kinds of issues. So, it's inherent in the, in the project that the, some of the more straightforward solutions are not available, but because the whole underlying area of the site is an underground parking garage, and therefore, the, kind of the more usual and simple solutions to servicing and continuing the utilities are simply not available, and that's what has, part of what has driven, you know, kind of an expensive and deep solution here.
Just one last point. We all have ideas of what sewer lines and water lines, wastewater lines, look like. These, we're talking about eight-inch pipes. These are not 24-inch pipes, you know, 12-inch pipes. These are eight-inch pipes. I don't know if any of you have lost a, or know of someone who's lost use of a line out to taking sewage out to the street, but nowadays, nobody digs up to replace a sewer line. They line them, they put, they put them through from one end to the other. On this street, it starts at five feet and goes to 20 feet at the other end. So, it isn't necessary to, in every case, to have to go in and tear this out.
Thank you. Did we have, I guess, in, so, related to that is the easement, then, or the encroachment and the parking allowed. So, I have a question about in terms of whether, whether adjusting that and losing 99 spaces, if that's going to be, is it 90? I'm sorry, I have so many notes now.
It's 94 spaces.
94 spaces, right, and--
37 on each level.
Right, right. If that's, to me, I feel like that's not such an awful thing, to lose some of the spa, I mean, to lose the spaces if we can reduce the encroachment a little bit. So, I guess I have a question to the applicant. Again, sorry to keep making you come up and down, but in terms of how you came at the number of the spaces that you'd like to have, and also, just in terms of, I understand it's going to be unbundled parking--
Yes.
But there is no, on the other hand, here, as well as in other places, we refer to, you know, that this can be considered a mixed use, because there's public parking, but there's not really, from what I can see here, there's not really a guarantee as to how much is actually going to be available to the public, right?
That's because we're all, we're all working on faith, and faith is, in the station area plan, the city in its divine wisdom and with consultants decided that apartments only get, what, a half, half a space per unit, or whatever, one per unit. I mean, it's all different.
Right.
If you look back 20 years ago, for every bedroom, there was a parking space, and we're not there anymore. But this is all based on faith that we're in a transition mode, and people are going to drive less. I, you know, I don't know whether that's going to pan out or not, but we have an area where we've got that restriction, where we have an office building that is for many users, not for tech users, but for many users, if you go to a Fortune 500 company out of New York, you want New York Life to come into this property, they may very well want one space per thousand and reject the location because it doesn't fit in their national cookie cutter. Now, maybe they're becoming more enlightened, and they're going to smaller spaces, but there is a risk there, and this is a $500 million effort, okay? And risking it on having insufficient parking is not something the city should--
And risking it on having insufficient parking is not something the city should think about, especially when it needs public parking. So I can't give you the quantities of public parking, but, you know, logically, during the day when people go to work, that those spaces are going to be vacant. And we're not going to assign them to them. They only use them as they occupy them. So those spaces become public parking. And that's the whole idea of having... Not having it unbundled, is that it becomes available. And if you have a management company who's going to earn based on their use of that parking, they're going to do the best they can to manage it so that the public does get the benefit. The other thing is, and this is why I didn't really want to take the sewer line issue tonight. When the calculation is on the 99 spaces, that assumes that you have to wipe out the entire line to accommodate the 20-foot depth at the corner of Linden and Sarah Avenue. That really isn't necessarily the case, but we haven't had time to look at this more carefully, okay? And there's a possibility that even you could give up three spaces at the end of the block, achieve the access that the city's concerned about, and not have... And not lose all 99 spaces. So I mean, that's one reason why I really didn't want to get into that tonight, okay?
And thank you. And I'm aware that we have... There's a lot of other issues, and also the development agreement is not completely worked out, and there might be changes, but...
I'd like to draw the commissioner's attention to the top of page 12, where there's a summary table. And also, in the specific plan itself, there are two sets of parking standards within the specific plan area. One that applies generally within the specific plan area, and a lesser parking standard that applies only in the transit-oriented development. So we require less parking per use because they're very close to the station. So in this table, it shows that to meet the parking demand, and again, this was based on EIR and all the analysis, 899 parking spaces is what's required. And 5% over that would be 945. Eliminating the 94 parking spaces takes you down to 945 spaces, which is dead on the 5% over. The other 25 spaces that staff says we won't count are those spaces that are in the drive aisles. And again, as I pointed out, we won't recognize them, we don't count them. But I've been to San Francisco, I think we all have, where they take your keys from you and they park them as tight as they can. So again, if they're running valet parking and, you know, they'll go and move the space when people need to get out, those other 25 spaces or other beyond that could be available, and that would be up to the, you know, the valet operation to make that work. So without the encroachment within the street, they provide 5% more than they're required to, and there is the potential for that additional parking in drive aisles and that sort of thing that can be managed by a very active valet presence on the site. So again, I think, given the kinds of issues we've identified that have to do with giving up that 17 feet underneath road, yes, at a depth of 14 feet. But if those utilities are all coming out, and we have other property owners on the other side who are also interested in development, maybe the utility shouldn't go on the west side of the street. Maybe it should be in the middle, so everybody gets to have a little... You know, when you start looking at it from a precedent and fairness perspective, you know, those property owners may also have some concerns about where those utilities are being placed. So I think that the recommendations in terms of where the encroachments can be permitted and provide the parking, that we have been very careful to make sure they can meet their requirements and they can actually even have the 5% over.
Okay, thank you. Did any other commissioners want to comment on that? It seems like there's still some working out that's going on, so I guess we'll be hearing about it some more. My fellow commissioners are quiet. So I'll just say, personally, I think if we can somehow adjust that so that we don't deal with the precedence issues, the maintenance issues and all of that, that would be... I would be more inclined to go along with that. And I think the parking is, even if there is a loss of the parking, there is plenty, as per at least the staff report at this time, from what I can see. And so if we can avoid the exceptions or, you know, changes along the way, I think that would be, for me personally at least, that would be something I'd prefer. Mr. Feng?
Yeah, so, you know, listening to all the testimonial from different parties, both the property developer as well as the staff, I think my first reaction to that is, I do believe that we are setting a precedence by allowing it. And I think we need to be extremely careful about that because the other seven properties on the other side of Sarah, although we don't see any development currently being proposed, at some point they're likely to be developed. So to push all the utility to the west side of Sarah may not necessarily be a fair thing to do. And it would also set a precedence if we were to allow an encroachment of 14 feet into the Sarah lane.
It's... We've already basically contemplated in the plan, an encroachment of seven feet, below grade, above grade, and there would be an additional 17 feet, so the total would be 24 feet into the Sarah right of way.
Okay, so, and then plus the fact that they still have to do shoring and possibly tieback into making that underground storage, underground parking possible from an engineering perspective. So you're going even further than the 21 feet that you're talking about, right?
24... I've had... We have discussed that with Mr. Muzy, and he has soil reports and those sorts of things that I think indicate that there do not need to do tiebacks, but it still is 24 feet out of the 50-foot right of way.
Yeah, so I do believe that, you know, I think the same thing would be... I think, you know, in time, when the other properties get... Come into a proposal for development, if they ask for the same thing, then, you know, we have to prepare an answer for that if we were to make that precedence. So I would be extremely cautious, you know, in that.
Okay, we... This is only one of many things, so if we want to just go ahead and move on to the next. So I guess we talked about the 45 feet, I mean, 45-degree height plane. I just would like some clarification because this was measured from 504 Hemlock? Is that what... Because the house that's right next to it is actually 500 Hemlock, but the staff report says that the plane was measured from 40, from 504, so just to clarify.
That was the address. I was... I wasn't in the office, and when I was writing that part, I asked somebody for the address for that property, but...
Okay, so it is actually 500, then?
Yeah, the measurement is from the property that Mr....
That's right next to...
Decote. Yeah, it's this property here. It's this property here, this is the property line here, and then across the front here. So that, in Exhibit E, I think, which shows the corner of this building and the corner of this building falling within that, was measured from the front and side property boundary of that property.
Okay, so that is 500, just to clarify. So that should be from 500 Hemlock? Okay, and we were talking about some adjustments with the height plane and things like that in terms of design review. I believe... I don't... I know there are things in the development agreement that we're still trying to work out, but in terms of consideration of maybe reducing a little bit the height on that side that's next to California and Hemlock, kind of adjacent to it, what had been the...
Well, again, it is at a 45-degree plane, so the higher up the building, the more the building needs to step back. But our recommendation is for a number of other things having to do with reduction in the height of the ground floor, to ground an adjustment for that. In the height of the street wall height to flex... To do an adjustment to allow that, that can't accomplish everything that's necessary for the commercial building. So there's two solutions there. Allowing the encroachments of the building at plus 25 feet, where they would hang... Where they would project out over the road, we've recommended in support of all of those. Again, there's some encroachment in Linden that we don't believe is necessary. It's an existing public right of way. Again, it's not necessary. It wasn't contemplated in the specific plan, so we're recommending that that not be supported and that the building be adjusted to stay out of the right of way, below ground. But again, encroachments can occur at plus 25.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the commissioners... I don't want to be... Please, Commissioner Davis, regarding that.
Are we still going to talk about the 45?
Yes, because I'm not done with it, I'm sorry.
Well, just, Mr. Muzy, worst case, what does it mean? How many units? How many floors? How many step backs? I mean, best guess.
What's the possibility?
The concern that I have is that the units that are on the top floor that have exposure to San Francisco and the main view, okay? One-bedroom units, I mean, they're nothing. I mean, and that's what happens, is that they get reduced. Plus, you end up with, in the stacking, you end up with potential water issues going forward because you've got terraces that are built over occupied space below. And it's, from a construction standpoint, they can be taken care of, but there are problems related to that that are often the case. They, you know, it's those sorts of issues. The value is in that corner, and we're being asked to give 15% to low-income housing and taking that corner, that prime... If it weren't the prime corner, I wouldn't be here, but it is. And it... To be quite honest, this was really in the process, the way it was explained to me. It was... The property line was the definer, and it was one site. There was no cone, there was no, you know, neighborhood issue, and this has all come with the change of administration. And my understanding was that it could be solved by acquisition and by taking care of, you know, that property so that it... My thoughts was that make it a park for that neighborhood. I mean, they've been impacted in so many ways that having a neighborhood park at the end of the block there would be, I think, a positive thing for them and make up in some way for them having to live with the buildings that will be built next door. And that... But the concern, I guess, of staff is that they don't have a, you know, an easy way of getting there. And it's true, it's going to be difficult. And I would... I've contemplated maybe conditioning it on such that if the general plan changes that and makes that a feasible thing, and we can work out with the codes so that we satisfy their need and not drive them from the community, which is not my desire, you know, that we could achieve our end and their end and the city's end, and everybody come out of this with what's appropriate. Just one thing, Mr. Feng, I want to be clear that we are not moving the sewer line or the subject line. Those lines are there now. And in fact, if there... If that property is developed, the right way for that all to be handled is for those lines to go to the California Drive on El Camino, where we have capacity. This is the crazy part of this. If we pumped those things up the Isabel to El Camino, we could go from Isabel 200 feet to the new line we're installing and take care of all of that in this iteration. But the city won't allow us to pump uphill because they don't want to pump... They don't want to pump. If these properties are developed, the eight-inch line that's in the street isn't going to work for them, and they're going to want to pump... They're going to want to take their sewer line out to El Camino and run it to the main line that goes down California. They're not going to want to rebuild and go down 20 feet with an eight-inch or 10-inch or 12-inch line. I mean, it's going to happen as part of their development. We're just trying to keep them in the condition that they are for the period of time until those properties develop. And once they do, they're going to have to take care of it that way because that's the right way that it should all be handled, but it's not. Anyway, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any other... Okay. Yeah, I think we... This is a difficult... A really difficult one because I think, as... I appreciate the fact that it's been a project in progress for many years and a lot that has gone into it. At the same time, the hardest thing for me since being on Planning Commission has really been that neighborhood. To just be honest with you, the neighbors of Hemlock who've been suffering a lot from different... Suffering? Anyway, impacted a lot by different things that have been happening in that neighborhood. So that is something that is actually very much of a concern for me personally. And I don't... I just don't know at this point in terms of if there is any way, if we can put on our thinking caps or something, and just if there's any way to alleviate some of that. If we're in residential neighborhoods, all of our projects that have to do with the high... We talk about, you know, shadows and privacy and all of that, and this is just a strange case because we're dealing with commercial versus, you're right next to a residential. So personally, if there's anything, I just don't know what it would be, but maybe if we can have some creative something to come up. And I recognize that it is a prime location, so that's a little difficult. I don't have any answers, I know, but if we could kind of think through that, that would be great, too.
Do you both... Both sides still feel that there's hope to work this out? With getting to her point of can we work this out? Does it feel like there's some hope here, some options?
This has been extensively discussed. Adjustment process is not available. Even if it was available, it's not sufficient to adjust it. Our discussions with the city attorney's office is, it requires an amendment to the specific plan to not have it apply. And we would then go through a community engagement and outreach about not having that. That 45-degree slope played applies only in two places. This residential corner and then on the neighborhood that's on the other side of the High Line Canal. Those are the only two places where it applies. Mr. Muzy is correct that through the specific plan, if that designation of that one lot was changed to not residential, then the measurement would go to the next residential parcel. But again, there would have to be a good public policy reason for that. And the discussion so far about parks has been that he would buy it, but that would come off his park fee. So the city would be, again, if we have money to spend on parks, our question would be, is that the highest priority park need in the community is to take that amount of money and buy that property and make it a park? If we had a million or $2 million or whatever the amount is, is that where we as a community would choose to spend it? So I don't have a problem, his proposal, if he says, can you write the condition so that if it's sometime in the future, that's no longer designated residential? I'm happy to write the condition that way because it wouldn't apply. But I, you know...
We can't predict that.
We can't predict that, but if that's a solution, if he finds out a satisfactory solution that would require a general plan amendment and a rezoning to make it not apply. But we could write the condition that way to leave that door open.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We'd like to bring up the next... I think 45-degree, that's about as much as we can go right now. I think so. If you need to speak into the mic, though, so you can talk to me on the side.
Do the staff believe that we can work out of 45-degree issues among yourself?
No.
No, I think we just have to see it at the next...
The farthest we can go is to write the flexibility in that says if at some point in the future it's no longer, you know, then the building doesn't have to step back. But we're required to apply that. He wishes it not to be applied. And so the solutions are, by, you know, get that general plan amendment so that it's no longer designated residential. And again, what's the good public policy reason for that? Or amend the specific plan itself so that 45-degree plane is deleted from applying. So it takes a legislative action of the council, one way or the other, to not have it apply.
Okay.
Otherwise, it applies.
Otherwise, it applies.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. If we'd like next, just go down the line, if anybody has any. It's just, I guess I'll just power through the conditions of approval recommended by staff. Maybe we'll do that, and then, because we've already kind of handled that. So in terms of recommended, we talked about the encroachment, the 45, and then the maximum street, maximum street wall height, that can be staff recommendation to use adjustment of 10% to be allowed for that. Personally, I don't have any issues with that. Do any of the commissioners? I'm sorry, I'm top of page 17.
Yeah.
So if you have any questions or clarification, top of page 17 regarding maximum street wall height.
No problems.
No problems. Okay. Okay, great. I'm sorry, Commissioner Feng, you're, okay? Okay. So, and then the next, on top of page 18, no, that one we already talked about. The top of page 19, condition approval to allow the developer to use either the step of the nine-story in on all sides, this is for the commercial building?
Right.
To step on, step on all sides by 10 feet or reduce the building height by six feet and then have the adjustment approved? Is there, do we have any thoughts from the applicant about that, or where's that? Is there a preference, or do we need to?
To be perfectly honest, this, the first I've heard of this is with the staff report.
Okay.
We've not had an opportunity with our architects to look at this. I mean, have you?
Mike, can I address this?
Yeah.
So.
Mike first.
Wait until you get to the mic, please. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm Paul Wolford. I addressed you the last time I was here. So there's intent and there's specificity. So the intent of the specific plan was to create a vital urban neighborhood. It wanted buildings that weren't just square boxes, that are extruded simply up and wedding cake, as your project planner Colette said. So what we did to comply with that was, as you can see from the plan, we created a sculptural and dynamic plan in form. It comes up in the building steps so that you don't have something that's one extrusion all the way up. And so if you saw the building, if we could pull up the elevations of it, or even the perspective, actually.
The 3D perspective would probably be pretty good.
Commercial.
Actually, I think we have the aerial. Did you have that?
This is the, oh, you're talking about the very, very.
The commercial top, the east.
There you go. So, in order to comply with the intent of the plan, one of the things that we've done very specifically is we've stepped the building so that it steps in the skyline. We stepped the massing in, we stepped the massing up. The two suggestions that planning came up with, one was, would be to step the entire facade ever so slightly all the way up, would essentially be, I thought that's what you said.
No, to go all the way around the step, to go all the way around the building.
You have already shown in that, you've already stepped in the ninth floor on the east side.
Right.
Okay. So it says you have to step the rest of that floor in 10 feet all the way around. You have to adjust the building on the top, or reduce, take six feet out of the, you know, bring it down, taking a little bit out of each floor so that we can then apply the 10%, the 10% adjustment. Because we can't reach all the way to 116 feet. We can only reach to 110 feet. So the two solutions that are written out as proposed conditions is one, either continue that articulation for the very top story, move it in along all sides, not just the east side, by 10 feet, or take six feet out of all the floors overall, and then have, allow the street wall height to go to 110 feet, which would be the height of the building.
So the latter would really be, it would move into the realm of not being leasable, viable property. So we wouldn't recommend to the developer to reduce the floor-tofloors like that, ideally, because you'd be reducing it almost a foot per floor, not quite, right?
And how high are the ceilings right now in the current design?
We're at, yeah. So we're, it's basically we're about nine-and-a-half to 10-foot ceiling when you add ceilings in. So in terms of stepping the building back, the question I would have for the project planner is, is this something that could be dealt with as a variance within the specific plan?
Can we answer it?
The adjustment is for 10%. We've looked at it. So 100-foot street wall height could go to 110 feet, you're six feet beyond that. So that's, that's the extent of the flexibility. We could look at variance procedures, which remain available in the, from the zoning ordinance. But there you have the findings, and the findings are extremely difficult to make. You have to have a, you have to experience a physical constraint that applies only to your property, is not generally experienced by other people, and you'll be deprived of a property right that other people enjoy or other properties enjoy if you don't get the variance. The findings are extremely difficult, and so they're used for things like when somebody has the smallest lot in the neighborhood, and in order to have a usable house, they need to exceed floor area ratio or coverage. It's not intended for these kinds of things. That's why the adjustment procedure has been provided in this.
So in interpretation from project planning, so, we all work in many different, pardon me, communities, often there is the subject to flexibility within the interpretation of the plan and the actual specific guidelines for it. I guess that would be the question. So if we're really talking about above 100 feet to the 110, since the cone of the site actually extends up, so the airfield FAA regulations move up, and our building also changes almost seven feet from this point to this point in height. So we have a shift in the height. So if we were thinking of the building as a kind of flat site, the building has nearly a half-story or almost a story of slope. So I guess we would see if the planning commission would be willing to have flexibility on that one issue. Because we feel like the intent of the plan has been met. We've stepped the mass, we've actually stepped the mass in and up all over the building. And so it's one of those things where we feel like we've come up with a handsome architecture that looks enduring, that fits this community, that has a two-story gallery here facing the public. And so in order to wedding cake the architecture, is it physically possible? Is it physically possible? Yes. Is it a desirable thing for your community and the architecture of the building? I would say no. I think it compromises the artistic integrity of the project. And so, I sit on Civic Design Review in San Francisco, I've sat on urban design commissions in other communities, you know, every planning commission and every commissioner has choice. And so I think this is where we would look to you to work with us on the flexibility of that six feet, given that the site shifts and that the building has already complied with the intent of the specific plan.
I think my understanding, though, is that because of our specific plan, that we do, the flexibility that we have is that 10%. Is, that's, and if we want to go beyond that, that's not something that we have, we have the capability to grant. Is that, that's what it sounds like to me, is that, isn't that, is that not the case? So the 10% adjustment is, that's what we have to work with? Is that not?
Again, you know, that's, that's how we read it, that's how we look at it. We're happy to remain in discussions and to learn, and often the best solutions come from engagement. Again, we're not talking about wedding cake. The building is already brought in on one side, we're simply talking about, instead of having the setback all on the east side, maybe having it go all the way around the building on the ninth floor. That's what we're, you know, but we'd be happy to, maybe there's some reading, some other provision that the applicant team can identify, and we'd be happy to talk to them about it.
Personally, I would like to see if we can find out what we can and cannot do, just to kind of figure that out, because it is at least on the side more where the station area is, and so, for me personally, I feel like I would be inclined to be able to be a little bit flexible on that piece. That's just from me speaking, but I don't even know if we have that ability to do that. So, I, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. If you could, I think you need to turn on your mic.
The airport land use issue and the fact that the slope is confining, and we've met that, and the trouble is that as the slope goes over the site, it isn't, it isn't uniform. And lowering, one of the other things you have to consider is, we, at least the planners at the time, and I've not had, given Colette an opportunity on this, really wanted us to do a landscaped area on the roof and to make the roof an accessible area for people to be able to enjoy the views. And that's what we've done. That's, that's why it's stacked. It's also done, the way it's stacked is because of the winds. In other words, having it higher on the, on the west side protects the users on the roof on the east side. If we make it flat, we have no, the buildings would be exposed and the area would not get the use. So, I mean, those, we're all vetted with prior staff, they understood, they understood the plan, they designed the plan. And again, this, for me, this showed up Friday. So this is not an issue that I'm conversant with.
So there's room to talk, any commissioners, please?
Perhaps we can give them some time to work out that issue among themselves, I mean, since Mr. Muzy said he only heard it at the end of last week, perhaps we can give them an opportunity to work that out.
Perhaps, if you have, do you have any thoughts in terms of which you, your, what you would like to kind of see, or?
Well, I mean, if 10% is all we have to give, then that's what we have to work with, unless there's an exceptional hardship coming from the developer that we can see that they can prove in terms of granting of variance.
Okay. And any other commissioners like to comment on that?
So, did you say that the building height is not the same from one side to the other? It's shorter on one side? Did you say that?
The ground plane elevation is, yes.
So, it's only, it's 116 on one corner, so to speak, but not at the other corner?
Well, it's, because the building has an overall height, and so Kathy, if you could speak to this, depending upon where it's measured, but the site itself slopes about seven feet from east, from west to east. Right.
Towards the station.
Right, towards the station. So it's a pretty significant slope.
So when we say the street level height?
So seven feet, and we're worrying about six. So there's a seven-foot slope difference?
Yes.
And we're worried about six feet of height?
Right, yeah. So we feel like we've complied with the intent of the specific plan, and that's why we would be looking for some flexibility, because we stepped the building, we've actually recessed entire pieces of the facade, as you can see, so that it's not simply an extruded box. I think the intent of the plan is to create a vibrant, dynamic building that's a gateway to your community, and we feel like we've done that. It doesn't look like any other building up and down the peninsula. It really looks like something that fits into this community. And so we would really ask for flexibility and the ability to work with planning to come up with a solution that allows the project to move forward, as is.
We will continue to talk with them, there's no action. We're not, we're not asking you to take action. We appreciate the discussion and the information. Perhaps we can take a look at, again, we worked with maximum elevation and perhaps taking a more refined look all the way along the building to see what portions of the wall are, you know, what the height is of the street wall all the way along. It may not be 116 all the way along, and in a more detailed study, we might be able to reach agreement. But we are faced by the fact that the plan does have height limits, FAA does have height limits, and we've been given some flexibility, but not carte blanche.
So we would appreciate that, and we would gladly work with staff and the project planner on that.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I missed one on page 15, so that is regarding the height of the ground floor. So to use our, the recommendation to apply the adjustment of 10% to allow for it to be to not be the required 15 feet, but to be able to go down to the 13 and a half. Personally, I don't have an issue with that. I think that's reasonable, but I, any commissioners have any comments or questions regarding that?
I don't have a problem with it. Was that a surprise, too, or did you already hear that one?
I heard it today.
Heard it today. How do you feel about it?
Well, I mean, so at this point, we're not asking them to adjust, we're saying we're applying our flexibility.
We're approving what he.
We're approving what he's asking for.
Okay.
If you can use a mic, sorry, we're telesub.
The confusion we had was, we designed the retail space to be 15 feet. We didn't realize that when they were talking about ground that it applied on the podium and applied to the activity area in the R2 building. In other words, the area that is 13 feet in the R2 building and even in the R1 building. In the R1 building, it's the area used for, that might be used for homework or home.
Live work.
Live work. And in the, and in the R2 building, it's where the gym and the, that area is as you enter the building. And we didn't, we thought this applied to retail, the 15 feet. So the 13 feet, if it's acceptable to the, to the you folks, it'll be acceptable to us.
So any other comments regarding that? Okay. The next is regarding the galleria and considering that as, so the staff recommendation is to consider the galleria as the publicly accessible open space, even though it is not out in the open, but to consider that as publicly accessible open space, so if you'd.
That might need a little more discussion. If we go to page seven, there's a table there that summarizes the square, the square footage of the various open spaces. The area, I might need to go to the mic for that. So we basically have three spaces. We have, this area here is called the Gateway Plaza. This is not a publicly accessible space, it's an amenity for the people in the building. This is called Sarah Alley. There's a small transit plaza along here, which is basically taking part of the public street in addition to part of the site and creating a seating area and landscaped area right along Linden. And then there's the galleria. So if we didn't have the galleria, the site still meets its 10% requirement. The requirement of the plan is that each individual lot must meet that. And if we didn't count the galleria, then the commercial property would fall short. Now that can be addressed by adjusting lot lines. There's a lot line that runs more or less down the middle here. If that lot line's moved over, then more of this open space counts on that property, and, you know, where the lines are drawn here can change. But as we start fiddling with those things, then we change some of the coverage, the units per acre and so forth. And again, it's not, it's not open to the sky, but those kinds of interior spaces, particularly given the setting, we're here with a high volume of people, transit, shelter during inclement weather. Again, we went through all the reasons why the galleria made sense to be recognized as a public space, how it could be used, what it offers. If the commission thinks, no, we don't want to go down that path, we don't want to get started on that, there is another remedy that leaves the project intact, which is to move the lot lines so that the C1 parcel meets its 10% by taking more of the Sarah Alley open space into that, and we just kind of, kind of adjust it all. So I would encourage you to look at the analysis that's provided in the staff report that goes through all of the guidelines for the open space and how, it starts on page 19, and how the galleria would fulfill those.
Can you give a little bit of a description of what that would look like, just, I think, for the benefit? Because I was looking through everywhere and I couldn't find it, so.
The galleria?
In terms of, yeah, maybe Mr. Muzy can, or some, just what that looks like, because I think I, one of the residents did mention a concern that it doesn't, it just feels like it's a lobby or something, it's not going to feel like open space, so.
It's a, it's a pretty substantial space for a lobby.
Right.
Here, it's this whole corner of the building. It's a two-story height spot. It would have.
Two-story open, two-story height, okay.
You know, it'd have seating, it would be lens. It would be landscaped. There would be adjacent retail space. So, yeah, you could say, okay, that's just like the cafe seating for a coffee shop. But again, when you think about what the population in the area is and, you know, that population coming through there, picking up something for lunch, picking up something for dinner, stopping to meet a friend, all of those kinds of things, that's, that's what this space can accommodate. And we'd be looking at it in more detail at the design review stage, specifically at, you know, the seating, whatever landscaping improvements might be added in that area to ensure that it continues to be that. And it would also be subject to an open space easement. We're not just saying, oh, this will be an area and it'll be open. It'll have an easement that ensures that it'll be open from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. And it has to be maintained as a public open space. So, again, either way, this site, this project can meet its open space requirements. We think that this was a, was an appropriate amenity, given the proximity to the transit station. If you don't, if you don't want to go there, we can still adjust lot lines and have it comply. But the recommendation of staff is to support that.
I was just going to add-
And you need to speak in the mic. Thank you.
I was just going to add that this is a, and I'm sure you know this, but it's completely acceptable planning practice for communities to adopt privately owned, public open spaces as part of the public realm. It's not required for this developer to offer a two-story Galleria that opens directly onto the Bard access between Bard and El Camino. This is really a big give back to this community from this development team because it easily could have been one story with a small lobby taking you into an elevator vestibule. So, taking office floors out, taking two stories out and giving it back to the public was something that we saw as a real public benefit. Now, if that were an outdoor space, because we looked at this, we did wind analysis on this, because of where it sits and where the wind is racing through here, no one would sit outside there. So, the, the kind of Galleria quality to the thing means that somebody could stop and have a coffee, take their phone, sit on their laptop and work and use it as a community space in a viable way if it's protected and covered that they wouldn't be able to. Because it's actually facing south and southwest, it's going to be filled with daylight all day long as well. So, from the morning to the evening, this is going to be a sunlit space. And so, we, we also think that it's going to be one of the ways in which people are going to be more comfortably able to traverse this hill because of that site, that steep site, you know, slope. The sidewalk on the outside will be less comfortable than actually moving through this space, going from the high point at Sarah down to California. And, and we'd be glad to go show you that in greater detail at a future point and what it kind of feels like. We've done perspectives and have, have a real sense of what the space is.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say that, you know, a good rendering of what that's going to look like really helps for us to visualize what you intend to build.
Yeah, and we'd be glad to share that.
Thank you. That's, yeah, exactly what I would like to see maybe in future. And just for the sake of the public, just to make it clear, that space is 50, about 5,600 square feet is my understanding. So, so that's that amount of space. Commissioners have any questions about that one or comments or feedback?
I thought the staff's arguments were sound. I would consider it open space. Was anybody here on Saturday for the Art and Wine Festival? How weather could be changing and it was very hot. I mean, so the idea that it might be cold, it might be hot, it might be windy at a sheltered space would be valuable space in terms of a place to relax and recreate and hang out. So, I see it as open space, no problem.
Okay, and I would concur with that as well. I think especially with their winds here. Lovely winds. So, okay, so going on with that. I think site development plan, that was, those were the main issues from the site development plan unless, unless anyone can see anything else. Okay, the evaluation of the vested, vesting tentative parcel map in terms of, there was a recommended condition of approval on page 22 at the top, just to require that the final parcel map would provide for public access easements over the publicly accessible open space within the project, including the Galleria. Were there any issues or concerns with that, that recommendation for the condition of approval? No. Okay, and I didn't see any issue with that section at all. So, evaluation of the development agreement, I, my understanding is we don't have one to actually evaluate. So, I do have a question though, because I think this whole idea of affordable housing, we haven't talked about and I think that's a really important one to, an important one to address. There is, there is a question here, a request from the developer for impact fees to be, for affordable units to be waived. And I'm not sure how that can be tied in if we don't know what the affordable. So, it feels like that's a big question that's just kind of out there. Do we have any more clarity on that or?
No, that's one of the reasons that it's not before you. And again, it's, you know, I certainly appreciate the position of the applicant team is they've got, you know, costs and what they think they can get in rent and revenue and they're guessing that, and all those things. And then they don't know what all the weight of the conditions. So, this, this set of conditions helps move them forward to at least understanding what they might be required to do. And the city negotiating team will continue to discuss with them. And as I said, the applicant would, has indicated that he'd like, you know, he's willing to do it, but it's in the package of a, of a whole overall deal. And that's part of why it's still open. And we'll just have to wait for the team, his negotiating team and the city's team to continue their discussions and bring it forward as a comprehensive package. And it may be that we won't reach agreement and, you know, city staff will come with a recommendation, or the city team will come with one recommendation and the applicant won't be happy with it and you'll have to decide. But our goal is to try and work forward to get to consensus as much as we can.
Okay. Any comments on?
Do we have any sense on timing?
That's a tough one.
I think all of us would like to have been done yesterday. But we have a meeting scheduled for, I believe it's Wednesday, Thursday at, from 10 to noon to go through the last iteration, which was delivered mid-last week. And I think we're, my guesstimate is that we're at like 85% there. That's, that's where I'd say we are. But the 15% that's left are, are the natty issues. And, you know, some of them interrelate, or at least interrelate in my mind. I want to be clear about something. When I started this program in 2013, construction costs were at least 30% less than they are now, okay? And this has continued to escalate. We, when we were hit with the park fee, that's $20,000 per door, and then with the 15% low income. Now, you know, in my mind, what's fair is fair. If the city really has an interest in low-income housing, what is their contribution? And I'm not asking to not pay for the, the infrastructure of my site. Those will get paid for. But to pay 20,000 per door for what's supposed to be affordable housing and the city doesn't, doesn't recognize that, I have a problem with that. I also have a problem with the fact that I've been a taxpayer in this city all my life and my parents came here in 1935. The parks that exist in this town, we've paid our fair share as property owners with 180 residents on our property. And I expect them to be recognized. And those are all monies that we've put into the community and that have been spent for parks and everything else. So, but that's, that's part of what's going on in this negotiation is I want some recognition for those things. I want, I want there's some adjustments that have to be made. And then we can talk about the affordable housing and how, how that might all work out.
I can't let that stand. I will have to point out, I'd like to ask you to look at the top of page 23 of the staff report. Basically, there is a, an envelope of intensity that's specified. The specific plan draws on the model of the city, of the state's bonus density provisions. So, our contribution is instead of having a floor area ratio of 2.5, they have one over four for the R1 building, over five for the R2 building, and nearly six for the office building instead of a maximum of 2.5. The allowed units per acre for residential is 80. They're getting 135 for the R1 building and 203. So, we believe that by allowing that additional density, that provides value to the project. And that's what helps, allows them to propose affordable units or other kinds of public benefits. They, you know, it's not a monetary contribution, but it certainly contributes to the financial feasibility of the project and the profitability of the project, some of which needs to come back in the form of community benefits.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any comments on that? I guess we'll, we'll see more of it. I'd like to just make sure that continues to be in the, in the mix, to be considered. And maybe there's a middle ground somewhere to, to be able to take with that.
And again, the team, both sides are attempting to find something that works for both the city and the project because, again, it's not useful for us to approve a project that doesn't work financially and therefore is never going to be realized. So, our goal is to, if we can't get all the way to agreement, to just bring to you the smallest parts to adjudicate.
I feel like I'm talking the whole time, sorry. Do you, if you want to, please?
So, I just want to clarify one thing, Colette. So, in the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan on 4.4, it spells out that there's a minimum 15% affordable housing. Is that a requirement for all development within that plan?
For sale. I would draw your attention to footnote eight.
Okay.
Affordable housing requirements shall be compatible with applicable law and implemented through an agreement negotiated with the city. So, it'd be very interesting to see what legislation is coming out of this legislative season, but there's been case law. And it used to be that we required 5%, 10%, 15% inclusionary housing. And then there was court cases that changed our ability to do that. Many communities have now moved to charging an affordable housing nexus fee to deal with the change in the, in, in what the courts have said is lawful for us to do. What they overturned was rental housing because of the conflict with the Costa-Hawkins Act, which has to do with setting rents and rent control and the ability of developers to withdraw units from the market and all of that. And the courts found that the imposition of inclusionary housing on rental housing was in conflict with another piece of state law. That has not been the case with affordable, with for-sale housing. So, we are bound by that. So, if you say is it a requirement? Yes, it's a requirement on for-sale housing. No, it can't be a requirement currently on for-rent housing, but it can be achieved through the development agreement.
Although, I mean, with such a project with, you know, this size and we're actually increasing the FAR from two and a half percent to, you know, anywhere between, what is the aggregate average of the FAR in the end? You know, in upward of five and a half, right?
I, yeah, I, I don't have that average, but we could provide that.
Right, but you know, between 4.09 on R1, 5.46 on R2?
When we bring forward the development agreement, we will be making a recommendation whether we think on balance the community benefits justify the density increase and you'll be making that judgment as well. And if we don't reach agreement, you will be hearing from the applicant team about why the ask might be too much. But again, we're, our goal is to get to agreement and if we can't, we'd like to leave, you know, we'll bring to you the smallest amount of disagreement we possibly can in terms of a recommendation.
Very well, thank you.
I think the other question that I guess, because we have this design and, you know, in terms of going back and forth or not, I know, you know, people are concerned about the height of the, you know, the buildings being nine, 10 stories high in this area and that's being done to allow for more units. And so, then we're being asked to increase the development intensity, I mean, the density. And so, I'm wondering if, if, what the analysis has been, or if there has been any in terms of making them a little lower, like just having, reducing the number of units a little bit. Not, it would still, it would still be an increase, but if, if in some sections, it doesn't need to be even by a floor, it just, so that might help alleviate some of the impacts. And, you know, there are concerns about other things. But in terms of density, we are talking about increasing the density. So, have, are we having any discussions about, or can we have discussions about actually making it a little smaller?
That certainly can be part of the, of the discussion. The specific plan recognizes not just a rare opportunity in Millbrae, but a rare opportunity in the Bay region to provide density proximate to a very unique intermodal station. We don't have an opportunity to connect to as many forms of transportation anywhere else. So, it's a, it's a very precious resource and the policies and various goals of the general, of the specific plan, we've recommended that we, we take advantage of that in terms of the height.
And I don't deny that. I mean, I think-
Yeah, so we have not looked at reducing the height.
Yeah, I mean, this is a difficulty is that we, you know, everybody wants something to happen. We want some, or I want something to happen there. I think, you know, the fact that it is a very unique location, we want to take advantage of that. I agree with all of that. I'm just, at the same time to have, after several years, a project to come in and now we're, we're kind of asked to just tweak this here and there without really the elephant in the room, which is we're asking for a lot more density. We're going to have to adjust the heights of the building. We have the neighbors on that, on the, in the residential area to deal with. So, that's why I'm just bringing it up because I think it's, yeah, it's difficult when you're dealing with a project that a lot of people have worked on and I feel almost hesitant to suggest something like a major change. But on the other hand, I don't feel like I can just say, okay, well, I'm just going to tweak this, tweak that. I'm just one, I'm not saying that I'm against or for it at this point. I'm just feeling like, you know, R1, the building R1, if it were a floor, and I'm not saying we should, but if it were a floor less, that's 10 units that we're talking about, 12 units. So, we're not destroying the whole idea of let's capitalize on this area. But, but at the same time, we might be alleviating some of the things that we're dealing with in terms of the 45-degree, the height, all of that. So-
That's certainly something we can certainly take a look at that. But I think what the, Mr. Musi pointed out is, once you get to five or six stories, the fact that the building continues on isn't really going to change your opportunity to view the sky or, or other kinds of things.
I mean, you could do that.
A tall building is a tall building.
I mean, where does that stop at some point to me? It's like you can say, well, okay, so you can go one more floor because it's not going to make a difference, or two more floors. So, I think, you know, I don't quite go with that either. So, again, I'm not saying that change everything. That's not what I'm trying to say, but I'm just kind of thinking, you know, I feel like we need to have a discussion about, I mean, we're, that's what we're being asked to do, right? So-
And also at the same time, since I think majority of the impact would be felt on, along Hamlock, right? You know, is there any other creative solution, something that's out of the box where Mr. Musi can think of and, you know, between the staff and Mr. Musi? Is something that can be done, you know, within that little part of that community? Something they can do for them so that you can alleviate some of their pain that they have to go through one way or another? Because, you know, and I do agree that whether it's a nine-story building or 10-story building or eight-story building, they're going to feel the impact one way or another. I mean, they're going to be looking a blank more for years to come, right? So, the question is, you know, what can we do for them now, knowing that, you know, something's going to get built one way or another? You know, what can we do for these people so that, you know, alleviate some of their pains, especially, you know, Mr. Jacote versus some of the other people that live on Hamlock? pains, especially, you know, Mr. Jacoby versus some of the other people that live on Hamlock? They've, I mean, they've been dreading this discussion for a long time, right? And knowing that what's going to come.
And I would kind of argue that, not argue, but I would say also, it's not just the neighbors of Hamlock that are concerned. I think it's concern from other Millbrae residents and even the neighboring businesses, which are all single-story right now. So just trying to have, you know, bring that out there. Again, I, you know, I don't want to say, you know, we're going to just change every scrap, everything change. That's not what I'm intending to say, but I feel like, at the same time, we do need to have that discussion on just, you know, how the neighborhood will look. I'm not just, I'm not talking about just Hamlock. I'm saying, as you're driving down El Camino, and I, you know, I personally love the way the building looks, I'll just say that, but at the same time, I'm just wondering if there are ways to help reduce a little bit of that impact, because there are concerns about the fact that we're giving a lot of density, you know, it's almost double what we have. We're almost doubling what we have in our station area--
More than double, I think we're.
Yeah, more than double.
Yeah.
Right, in some areas.
We understand that you want the issue explored a little bit, and we'll be happy to do that and bring that back in our next report.
Can I address some of this, please?
Sure.
Yes, please.
I understand that when I submitted my application, I submitted for taller buildings than these, with the understanding that the city, that's what the city wanted, that the city wanted an identification, they wanted Millbrae on the map, they wanted it visible from 101, they want it visible from the airport, they want it visible from the planes coming into the airport. This was the premise. I designed, I went through and I had to show to the satisfaction of the city manager that not only I could build my property, but that every lot could be built on, that they could put their properties together and build larger comparable facilities, and that they all had this opportunity. You have spent, not all of the commissioners here today, but the commission spent time drafting the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. If you look at the TOD, it talks about 120 feet. That didn't come out of the air. That was discussed, and I paid half the cost of that study, okay, because it was the understanding that that's what the city wanted, that's what the planners wanted. It wasn't, nobody guaranteed it to me, I understand that. But that's part of the vetting that you folks all did less than a year and a half ago to approve this. And now to start, you know, having qualms, I mean, the neighborhood didn't just show up on Hamlock, they were there, they came to the meetings, you made a decision about that height. And I'm, you know, I'm very concerned if the doubling, for example, of the FAR, we had, 575 was the FAR we had originally. When they came to us, they decided, after the consultants talked to them, they were okay with the 575. But after the consultants talked to them, they said, you know, we want to do this as a bonus. You can still get your 575 or 565, but you're going to have to do some other things. And one of them is, you're going to have to provide 15% low-income housing. That was the trade-off. It wasn't supposed to be a requirement, okay? It became a requirement during the hearing process. It shifted from, that was the bonus that I was supposed to give. And that's what, you know, that was the agreement. It became a requirement afterwards, and I meant that. I was asked one day here whether or not I would do it for rentals and for condominiums in Contra, and I'm interested in doing that, I would do that. But, you know, the more I run the numbers after three years, it's very hard to spend dollar for dollar for the low, I mean, there isn't low-income housing. I'm not doing what Bart's proposing to do, okay, where they built stick-built buildings on the other side, separate from their project, so that they can basically do it more cheaply. And if they're allowed to do that, all the more power to them. But that's not what I'm proposing for Millbrae. I'm proposing that these units be equivalent, in the way that they're laid out, in the space that they have, and that they're low-income. So I think I'm doing what I understood was required of me, and I'm doing it on the basis that there was an understanding of what this was all about when you passed the Millbrae Station Area Plan. So I really do caution you that, you know, we're at a point where the values and the costs are out of sync. One of the things you need to understand, we have brokers here. If you go online and you look at what Millbrae rents for, okay, the rents in Millbrae range from 275 to maybe 375 per square foot, okay? In other areas, Menlo Park, where they're $4, $4.5, $5 a square foot. Bankers, who are the people who really build this project, because if you don't convince the bankers, there ain't no project. When they look at the market, they do appraisals, and appraisals are always rearview mirrors. What did the properties sell for yesterday, okay? What was the rent yesterday? So they're going to look at Millbrae, and they're going to be using those comps. When you use those comps and you put them on this project, it's very hard, at this point in time, to make everything work. And if you don't get roughly 120% available for a bank to look at, you don't have a financeable project. So, you know, the Christmas tree has a limitation before it falls over, and I just caution you, this is a Christmas tree. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'm not saying that we should change everything out, so I'm just kind of, again, I think that it warrants a discussion and for people to, you know, keep that in mind as well, because we are talking about increasing the density more than half, and at the same time, not being sure about the affordable housing. At the same time, I understand, and that was the next thing I was going to ask about, because we do have a fiscal impact analysis, that's from last year. So I'm assuming that that's, the report that we had in the attachment is from October 2016. So that is also, I don't know, I would like to see that updated in the future, or are we going to have a way to update it? Or, I mean, and the development agreement, it might change all of that as well, right? So--
I had it prepared by my consultants, and it was verified by city consultants that I paid for. So it isn't something I pulled out--
I'm not, yeah.
That some guy did me a favor and drew, you know, it's fairly conservative, okay? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have today's exact numbers, but it was very conservative when it was done, because that was the way that firm worked, and I think the consultants that looked at it, looked at it conservatively. So I think the numbers are real.
Right, I'm not saying that they're not real. I'm just asking if we are going, I was just asking if we're going to get an update, and no. And then the development agreement, I think, can impact that to a certain degree, right? Because it includes things like the impact fees--
Correct.
And it includes things like, I'm blanking out, but in any case, it does have, and then there are additional costs, I'm assuming, in terms of infrastructure and building and all of that, that would be incurred as well, that are, probably have gone up for the developer during that time, so--
The fiscal impact analysis, which is a requirement of the specific plan, is to look at the fiscal impact on the city. It doesn't look at the financial feasibility of the project. So the numbers will change slightly, you know, as, you know, cost of goods go up, sales tax rises incrementally. We're not intending to redo it. We feel that it provides a good framework, whether it's, you know, goes, whether, you know, again, it's the best data, the best estimate that we can make, and it's going to depend on how much retail's in there, what their sales are per floor, property tax, all of those kinds of things. So it shows that it's fiscally positive when it's all built out. And we're not going to update it because it's not, the numbers aren't going to really change much in a year, you know, it's, so that's what we're intending to take forward to city council in terms of showing the potential impact on the community's finances.
So regardless of--
Now, you are correct that if we, if the development agreement includes the issue of a waiver, then we'd have to note that, oh, well, this is how much impact fees we're going to get, but we've just agreed to not collect some portion of it, and that would have to be, it'd have to be part of the staff report.
Okay, and that's my main question, is just to make sure that things get updated according to what the actual agreement ends up becoming. Did anyone have anything else? Nope. Okay, so there was something here in the report about the constructing, realigning California Drive, realignment from Linden Avenue to the south side of Millbrae Avenue, if the city secures a necessary right-of-way. What is that, can you give a little more clarification in terms of how possible is that, or how, what is our, what happens if they don't? Or is that possible, or is it pretty much an automatic that you can assume that that will happen? So I'm on page 24, sorry for--
Yes, I know where, I know what page you're on.
For the other people who are not--
You will find in your packet, there is Attachment I. It looks like this.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I do not have it as an image, but what it does is, it looks at who owns the land that is located to the south of Linden, and the land in that area is all publicly owned. But there are easements and agreements, so it's under the control of other public transportation agencies like Caltrain and like Bart. So basically, it is incumbent upon the city to work with those public agencies to ensure their needs are still met, but that we, because basically what we're doing is, we want to move California from where it currently comes through to align better with this extension. And that is, the alignment here is what is identified in the Comprehensive Access Plan that Bart adopted for the station. But we can't tell you today, because we don't control all of that lands, but it is other public agencies, so we're very, we're very optimistic that we will be successful in doing that. And it certainly will make this area, in terms of traffic operations, work better with that realignment. But until we complete securing those rights of way, we can't represent to you or to the public that we can accomplish that. We need to have those continue and to conclude those discussions with those agencies.
Okay, thank you. Any other? All right, so just going to the last, I guess, the environmental, the EIR, in terms of staff preparing the required sequas. So the recommendation from staff was to recommend, for Planning Commission, to recommend to city council that we do not require any further environmental review for the approval of the station project, and that we can just draft a resolution for the sequa findings. So any feedback or questions on that section? No? Okay. So that seems straightforward, so I think all the other commissioners are in agreement with that, that portion of it. And having said that, just sorry if you can bear with me, just a few more questions, but do we have any other questions that other commissioners have regarding just the project in general, or things that you'd like to, you have questions or feedback?
No.
We're okay? We've gone through it enough? Okay, so I did, if I can ask, regarding the Transportation Demand Management Plan, the TDM? What is the TDM, regarding the TDM? Where does that fit into all of this that we're doing, or do we not have? Because when we're approving the specific plan, one of the things that came up is, we don't have a project in front of us, we're not approving it, we're going to look at it later. And I feel like we're at later. So I'm just wondering, where is that, where does that stand right now in terms of the whole management of transportation, and how does that fit into what we're doing here? So--
So the TDM plan has been submitted to the city. The TDM plan itself has also been submitted to what's called the City-County Association of Governments of San Mateo County. They are the congestion management agency for our county. The CCA, as they're called, they have their own policy as it relates to their congestion management program and land use, their land use component of the congestion management program. Staff submitted the Millbrae Station TDM plan to CCA. CCA has reviewed that and has signed off on it, they've basically given their approval of it. The city also has their own TDM policy. The policy at the city, though, basically requires a 20% reduction in trip generation. That 20% reduction basically would be monitored, the project itself, the trips would be monitored annually, and annually, they would take a look at whether or not that 20% reduction was achieved. As Colette mentioned earlier, that we will have to work on an agreement between the city and the developer that will sort of identify or define how that will work as far as the monitoring, as well as any penalties that would be associated with not meeting the 20%, or adjustments that would have to occur with the way that the TDM measures are operated at the site. As far as CCA, though, they actually have a different methodology by which they approve these, and theirs is done on an understanding that basically, for each trip that's generated in the AM or PM peak hour period, that the developer or the project applicant provides a TDM plan that gives enough different TDM measures, such as van-pull subsidies, let's say Bart tickets, alternative work hours, different things that a development or a project can do to hopefully reduce, you know, to encourage the tenants or the people that live or work there to take an alternate mode of transportation to reduce the impact on the local roadway. We don't always know that they will do that, but you have to put them in front of them to hopefully enable them to choose another mode. So there's two different methodologies that we're looking at, one CCA's approved, and one the city will be monitoring in the future. And the TDM plan is also on the website, for those of you that would like to take a look at it. We did not want to make the packet too, too large, so we do have a number of these other documents available for you on the webpage for this project on the city Millbrae's website.
Okay, so the TDM specific to this--
That's correct. So the project sponsor has submitted to the city a TDM plan, and that's the TDM plan we're speaking of that's been reviewed both by the city as well as CCA.
Okay, and are some portions regarding that going to be part of the development agreement? Is there any piece of that that's in there, or is it completely separate?
No, it's not a development agreement. There is a condition of approval that says that the TDM program, that they have to enter into a traffic divan management agreement with the city, which specifies, you know, you can attach this or specify it, and then also has monitoring, how do we measure that they're accomplishing it, that they're doing everything, and has enforcement penalties, enforcement and potentially penalties in it. So they have a proposal, as we move forward, that gets refined, tightened up, and codified into the agreement, which will be recorded against the property.
Okay, so just to be clear, then, if there were to be a recommendation to move the project, because we're not doing it anyway, but if we were to get to a point where we would, at a later date, recommend approval to the city council for approval of the project, the TDM is not necessarily, does not have to be codified yet at that time, it's just a condition that they need to have one? Or do we review it at the same time and include that?
Well, it is available, and it is on the website. Again, we had to be a little parsimonious about how much we bombarded you with.
It's too late, you bombarded us.
Yeah, there's a specific condition on page 10 of the site development plan, it's condition number 15.
Page 10 of the--
Of the attachment, no, of the attachment--
Attachment--
Of the conditions of approval that are included.
Attachment A.
Exhibit three--
Exhibit three, which is to Attachment A.
Yeah.
And page 10.
Okay, so condition number 15 specifically references it and says, prior to the issuance of a building permit, they have to enter into a written agreement that includes the measures with trip credits sufficient to equal or surpass the highest peak hour trip generation of the project. The agreement shall include provisions for annual monitoring, enforcement, assessment of financial penalties for non-compliance, and so forth. So we have their proposal of how they're doing it, we've set the benchmark, and that the agreement will then say, how are we going to measure their performance, and how are we going to course correct if they're not successful?
Okay, so again, in the future, if we do that, we will include kind of this, we could include that as a part of the discussion as well, the transportation demand management? Or do we not?
If you want to review it in detail, we can bring that, we can provide that, or you can look at it.
Yeah, I can look at it online, but I just wanted to--
If you want to understand the mechanism, this is your man.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other commissioners have any other? We've covered quite a lot, so I think the, at this point, the recommendation was that we continue, because we don't have a development agreement--
Correct.
So that we continue. I believe we need to continue to a date certain in terms of-- I believe we need to continue to a date certain, in terms of, is that the...
That's usually our preference, because then we don't have to renotice. But because of the issues with the development agreement, I think that we don't want to set a date and not achieve that date. So I think what, what the direction is from the city manager's office is to, to continue it to a future date not specified, we will then have to renotice it. But is that...
How does Mr. Musey feel about that?
Yeah, that's...
And the reason why, I mean, it puts us all on notice that we got to get it done. I mean, I'm not saying it has to be in two weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks, but, you know, I mean, I think within four weeks, we should be done with this. I can't imagine that we wouldn't be. So, you know, if, and if you save the cost of an additional notice and the pain and everybody, it gives us a deadline to work toward.
Is that something that the staff would be okay to do as well, maybe a month out?
If we don't meet it, then you have to notice a subsequent meeting, that's all.
The direction was, again, because what's, what's been happening is that the city's received a lot of negative press that we're not moving it forward, so if we then set a date of November 6th, and again, we're only half of the negotiation on the development agreement, and if we don't achieve it, it's then, oh, well, we're not, we're not bringing it forward. So again, the direction from this, that I believe was from the city...
I, I promise you I won't do that. Okay? I promise you. I mean, you know, this, this was the meeting, this is the meeting that I've been dreaming about. So, so, I mean, I know we're on the right road here.
You're, you're actually on the...
Okay. Can we have, can we have just a brief, the briefest of recesses, two minutes?
I'm fine with that.
I would agree.
Everybody's good with that?
I would agree.
Yes, we will have a brief, two-minute recess.
This is the last topic, I have another one.
Okay.
I mean, this is for eight, number eight.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Thank you.